And we're about ready to start. So I'm going to read the land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known as the Wiat language as gudini, meaning over in the woods or among the redwoods. Past actions by local, state, federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous people from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling of the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. So then if you'd like to join me for the flag salute. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Stillman.
Present.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Under Ceremony Matters, we have two proclamations tonight. The first is the proclamation of recognition of hunger and homelessness Awareness Week, November sixteenth through the twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. And Councilmember Schaefer is going to read that. Thank you.
Whereas the theme of Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week 2025 is Housing is a Human Right and Food is a Human Right. And whereas people from all walks of life, including individuals, families with children, employed and unemployed workers, elderly residents, veterans, disabled individuals, and youth are impacted by hunger and homelessness. And whereas the community recognizes that hunger and homelessness continue to be a serious problem for many individuals and families living in Arcata, and no one should have to worry about whether they will have food on their plate or a roof over their head. And whereas eighteen point nine percent of the population is below the poverty rate, sixteen point seven face food insecurity, of whom six thousand are children, thirty thousand residents are enrolled in CalFresh, of whom twenty-six percent are children, and eighty percent of children qualify for free and reduced lunch, uh, school meals. Most live on fixed incomes or survive paycheck to paycheck. Food for People distributed two point six million pounds of food, serving twenty-one thousand individuals. And whereas homelessness creates barriers to accessing essential services such as affordable housing, healthcare, childcare, and education, the cost of these necessities often contribute to hunger, food insecurity, and people experiencing homelessness on any given night. And whereas the aim is to eradicate homelessness by solving the root cause of it, to educate the public about reasons why people are hungry and homeless, including the shortage of affordable housing for low-income residents, and to encourage and support organizations committed to sheltering, providing support services as well as meals, food supplies, clothing, and hygiene products to the homeless and hungry. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the city of Arcata that November sixteenth through twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, is Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. It encourages all people in the community to work together to find meaningful solutions to these problems. That is dated today, November nineteenth, and signed by our mayor, Alex Stillman. And we have Nezzy Wade here, co-founder and president of AHA, Affordable Homeless Housing Alternatives.
Good evening. Thank you. You're welcome. Thanks to all of you. This is being accepted on behalf of everyone whose lives touch hunger and homelessness. That's those people experiencing either hunger or homelessness, and those who are working with people who are experiencing hunger and homelessness, or just see it in their communities. So thank you all for what you do and for helping us help other people. This is Greta Stockwell from the Food for People, and we're both here to speak with you. I'd like to thank you for the proclamation. It mentions some very important things about homelessness that we should know about, and that is the costs of what it is to be without housing. And for those who are experiencing high-cost burdens, how difficult that is. And, you know, we know there are a lot of people that are experiencing a lot of trouble with benefits now, food stamps, and all of that. But really, we're, AHA is an all-volunteer organization, and we work in your community. We work all around the community, helping people with outreach services. We have the mobile showers and other services, outreach, information and referral. And also, we bring other providers to our site to set, to create what's considered a community of care, so that we have other people get, when people come to us, they also get other services. That's becoming more and more difficult. As we know, some of the things we need to know about housing, and I'm sure you've heard that already, are the reductions that will be coming down the line for federal funding. And also the funding cuts that we've had in twenty twenty-five. In twenty twenty-six, they're simply going to get worse, and it's going to be harder and harder, especially for low-income folks to get what they need. And this is going to impact your opportunity to work with the rhino determinations. You have ten, uh, one thousand forty-seven units to implement in the next round, and over half of them are for low income. But it isn't just low income. Now the categories are acutely low income, extremely low income, low income, very low income, and low income. So over fifty percent of what you have to do is going to be for those categories. And it has to be permanent housing, or it has to be maybe transitional housing. And we hope that you'll work with the other members of the community, people like us, other nonprofits, that will be able to do some really innovative, creative things, because we have to start thinking out of the box. We simply aren't going to have the resources to do other things. And there's no more important time than now to have collaborations with all of the folks that are working on that. So we're encouraging you to reach out, and we might reach to you, asking you to support us with some of the funds that you have to be able to continue our services in your community and do more. So I'll turn it over to Greta.
Thank you. I'm Greta Stockwell. I'm on the board of directors at Food for People. Thank you for recognizing Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. There's a clear link between hunger and homelessness, and both are linked to the roots of poverty. Even though ninety percent of those we serve are housed, many are living paycheck to paycheck. Our goal is to offer the food assistance people need, so they do not have to choose between paying rent or putting food on the table. In our region, the need for hunger assistance is significant. Food for People is serving twenty-one thousand people in our county every month, nearly twice what we served five years ago. This has been a challenging year for food banks and people experiencing food insecurity. With federal cuts and disruptions to hunger relief programs, this work has only gotten more challenging. Recently, we've seen just what it looks like when the food security safety net breaks down. In the days following the announcement of delayed SNAP benefits, Food for People saw an immediate forty percent increase in people seeking our assistance, and many of them were scared, not knowing how they would feed their families. While that emergency has passed, looking ahead, we anticipate additional strain. Several policy changes will soon significantly change how supplemental nutrition assistance programs are administered and who is eligible. These shifts will place new burdens on states and communities, and ultimately reduce access for many people who currently rely on food assistance. Here in Humboldt, thousands of residents could be affected, which will increase pressure on local food banks and community organizations. When the larger safety net waivers, the impact is immediate at the local level, and it's not just impacting food banks. Our partners in sectors from housing and senior services to domestic violence are experiencing cuts impacting programs and the people they serve. The bright spot right now is how our community has shown up for one another. We've seen grassroots efforts and neighbors helping neighbors, and our nonprofits are working together and leaning on each other for support. Humboldt County takes care of its own, and that gives us optimism as we confront the everyday reality of hunger. Thank you for your work and your support.
Thank you.
Our next proclamation is designating November sixteenth through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, as the season of wonder and light in Arcata. That'll be read by Councilmember Matthews. Thank you.
Whereas the Arcata Chamber of Commerce and local businesses are coming together for the annual celebration of the holiday season, the season in wonder and light in the heart of Arcata. Everyone is invited to enjoy holiday sights, sound, and cheer throughout the month. And whereas the Arcata Chamber of Commerce will host a Small Business Saturday event on Saturday, November fifteenth, from two to six P. M., and shall include local business gift previews and promotions across Arcata and other holiday cheer surprises, and will celebrate Small Business Saturday on November twenty-ninth. And whereas, on Friday, December twelfth, Santa and Friends will visit Arcata along with music and dance to bring cheer to the children and families all across town, and local residents are encouraged to help make Arcata sparkle with the celebration of lights starting in the evening. And whereas, on Sunday, December fourteenth, the Arcata Chamber of Commerce will partner with the Chabad of Humboldt to light a public menorah on the Arcata Plaza to remain continuously lighted for Hanukkah through December twenty-second. And whereas the Arcata Chamber of Commerce encourages residents and visitors to patronize the local businesses, support this community event series, enjoy the beautiful array of lights on the historic Arcata Plaza throughout the season, to soak up Arcata's friendly, small-town holiday atmosphere, and to choose Humboldt by trying local stores first, in-person, and online when it comes to holiday shopping. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the city of Arcata that November fifteenth through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, is the season of wonder and light in Arcata. The council also wishes to recognize the Arcata Chamber of Commerce for its constant efforts to promote and enhance Arcata's identity, economy, and cultural spirit. This is dated November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, signed by Mayor Alex Stillman. And to pick this up is the Arcata Chamber Executive Director, Meredith Mayer.
Thank you, Meredith.
The two Merediths unite. Thank you so much. We're super excited that we're able to support Commerce in Arcata, and it's a great reminder to shop local and choose Humboldt this holiday season. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So the next item on our agenda, you know, we do have a lot of chairs available if anyone would like, standing in the back, if you'd like to come and sit down. If you would like to, there are seats here and there. So I'll go on to reports by commissions and committees. So tonight we have the annual report from the Forest Management Committee, and that will be given by our chair of the Forestry Committee, Michael Furnas. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. This is a report from, for the calendar year of twenty twenty-four, in keeping with the new policy of reporting by calendar year. I may slip in a few things that we did in twenty twenty-five. And I'll keep it short for you. You have a really good report there, quite a bit of detail. I hope you can find the time to read it. It has some great pictures in there, and, uh, and it will be, uh, interesting to you, I'm sure. So I'll just kind of make, I'll keep this short, because you have a really good report. And I'm just going to highlight a few things. The, uh, the staff and the Forest Management Committee continues to engage with researchers and forest practitioners on field trips and through presentations to understand the best available science and guide current forest management, and to consider additional newer forest management strategies. I think we talked about potential elder trees in the last report, and we've continued to explore that idea of finding those redwoods in the forest estate of Arcata that are capable of meeting their full potential as redwood trees. That is, they'll get the tallest and most complex and have the most arboreal biodiversity and all that. So we're continuing to, to look at that as something new. And we've had presentations by Marie Antoine and Steve Sillit about that, and are following some other developments in that area. And I'm a member of the faculty in the forestry department and teaching road location and design this semester. And just today, now this isn't in the forest, but just today, we took the class out for a lab at the culvert intersection of, uh, of Janes Creek, or McDaniel Slough, as it meets the bay, um, and Alliance Road. Uh, it was a big success story there of cohort block there for many years. It was fixed in twenty twenty by the city. And now the cohort go way up above there, thousands of feet above there. So, and it was a great little field trip. Mike McDowell joined us and helped out. And that's just an example of all the ways that Arcata is exemplary. And so also, big news is that the city has invested in forest infrastructure with a successful harvest in, in Jacoby Creek Forest that included a new road segment to support the Swainor Harvest, and now provides road access for management and monitoring and research between Fickle Hill Road and Lower Jacoby Creek. And there were also some culvert upgrades. And then this year, we also put in a bridge and a new culvert and a new road, and these were well-executed, well-designed, and these are durable infrastructure improvements that will help the overall management and monitoring and research and enjoyment of the forest. So, uh, and then we continue to work with Wetlands, Creeks, and Parks and Recreation, uh, I'm sorry, Wetlands and Creeks and the Parks and Recreation Committees to recommend funding priorities for the open space parks and trails special tax, including twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five funding to support further investment in infrastructure in the Jacoby Creek tract, which is the new bridge that has been installed. And I'd also mention that carbon offset credits remain available to the community with support the city and sequestering even more carbon within the community forest and continuing sustainable forest management. And these are really high-quality, very well-documented credits, and they're redwood. And redwoods famously doesn't rot much and doesn't burn much, and everybody loves it and grows very fast. And so these are sort of the best forest credits you can find worldwide, so, and they're for sale. Okay. And then I would just point out that the, uh, the state of the forest is, is very good. The Forest Management Committee is a very thoughtful group, longstanding group, and our meetings are very well-attended, and we offer a lot of advice to staff and, uh, and have a good time doing it. And the staff, I would note that is very competent and engaged, and there's a general feeling among the committee and I hope among the public that, that the forest is in very good hands. So, um, and as usual, we would invite you to contact the staff or Forest Management Committee members, if you'd like to take a tour, or you'd like to know anything else about it, or if you have questions about the report, so. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take those.
There are the questions from the council?
No, but I just would like to thank you. I'm always consistently impressed by the reports of the Forest Re-Committee, and, uh, and I know you're all, have been on the committee for a long time. And I do love the pictures, especially the owl. They're awesome. Thank you so much.
Yeah, there's some great pictures that were taken by staff.
The pictures are great.
Yeah, yeah.
So I just want to follow up on one thing, is that we have carbon credits that we sell from the forest.
That's right.
And normally we sell all our carbon credits. And so we do have another way if people want to think about traveling and, and offsetting their carbon credits. At the Humboldt Area Foundation, we have an Arcata Forest Fund, so people could actually send money there, and that money can then be used in projects the city of Arcata needs for matching grants or whatever it might be. So I just want to plug that, because I think that's another important aspect. So thank you very much for your time this evening.
Yeah, it's great to let people know about that Forest Fund, and that's contributing to a, a very conservative and conservation-oriented approach to forest management that we have here in Arcata. So, and again, these very high-quality carbon credits are, have been fully re-verified, and there's some more that are in the pipeline to be re-verified. And people can buy those to offset, especially their flights, which are really quite damaging to, to the atmosphere. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you very much for that. So our next item on the agenda, we're going to probably have to postpone that. So, Arcata.
So I just would respectfully ask the, the mayor and the city council if we could make an accommodation for Steve Cole, who is our co-chair for the Two Talk Committee. Scheduling today got a little bit crazy, and he could be here about seven twenty. So if you would be willing to adjust your agenda to accommodate him, probably, probably somewhere in the middle of new business, that would be wonderful.
Yes, when I meant postpone, we're going to put it later in the meeting.
That's great.
Not on another day. So.
Do we need to make a motion to do that?
Have a motion to postpone this, or to move it to a?
It'll be, and it'll just be later in the agenda today.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to postpone the staff report until later in the agenda.
I will second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, we'll hold that over. Thank you very much. So that means we'll go on to staff reports, and we'll receive, all reports shall be specifically imaged as city business and shall not request or lead to action by the council at this time. So receive an update of the Arcata Strategic Arts Plan, preview, the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six call for art from Emily. And Environmental Services Deputy Director, and Jaclyn, I always never say your name quite right, Dawn, and, thank you, even though I've known you for a long time. Jackie D, Executive Artistic Director of the Arcata Playhouse. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. Whoops. Can you? Seems not quite close enough. Is this? Yes? Happening? Okay. Good evening, council and community members. I am joined here, like you mentioned, with Jackie Dandino of Playhouse Arts, and we are excited to provide a three-year review of the Arcata Strategic Arts Plan. Bear with me just one second so that I can get this slideshow started. Where's our from beginning slideshow? Thank you. Okay, there we go. So, um, before getting into the review of the Strategic Arts Plan, I recognize that a lot of our council members have come to serve on the council since the Strategic Arts Plan was adopted, so thought it would be helpful to first take a step back and frame briefly the Strategic Arts Plan and sort of its adoption process. So a Strategic Arts Plan articulates a community's values, purpose, and vision surrounding the arts, and identifies actions required to realize that vision in summary. And, um, back in twenty twenty, thereabouts, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, our community development staff worked very closely with our local arts agency, Playhouse Arts, to develop the Arcata Strategic Arts Plan with a lot of community engagement. And I'll, I'll pause and see if Jackie wants to add anything about the kind of background and development of the Strategic Arts Plan.
Uh, we, no, we, we worked with city staff during the pandemic on, on the Strategic Arts Plan, and it was sort of a, worked with Susan Ornellis, started it out, so with the grant that we got from the National Endowment for the Arts to develop the Creamery District. So that's kind of where it, it grew from.
And so the arts plan was really intended to expand and formalize the city's support for Arcata's arts, artists, and art industries, while including overarching community issues that arts can be used to address. In addition to that broader plan of the Strategic Arts Plan, it formally, I think, redesignated is the term, Arcata Playhouse Arts as our local arts agency. And so a local HR, a local arts agency is designated by a local government, and it helps with the promotion, support, and development of the arts, really through formalizing a relationship between the local government and the local arts agency.
Yes, so here we are in the vision statement. The Arcata arts are highly valued. Arcata artists are fairly compensated for the work they do, and Arcata's arts and cultural life is equitable and accessible to all. So we, you know, after sort of surveying a lot of the community, we came up with some of these visions, um, and, and looking at what we're doing within the city of Arcata and, and Playhouse Arts, really, a lot of that is true with the amount that we pay artists to be involved in art around Arcata, the value that's placed on those artists, making things accessible to everyone. And I really feel like the arts are highly valued by both city staff, council, and the people within our community. So that vision statement is right on the money, or right on the nail on the head, head on the nail, whatever that is. It's great. It's right on track, so. So the ASAP goals, public arts are increased equitably throughout Arcata. We had, uh, a committee on equity Arcata that was Just Arts, that Laura Munoz and I started a long time ago, and so really works closely with Equity Arcata to make sure that we were increasing equity, equity throughout Arcata, and looking at our, um, our committee that we decide who's going to, our arts committee that talks about public art, we always make sure that there, that a lot of groups are represented, tribal representation, Centro Happy, um, LBGTQ, just we really make sure that a lot of organizations and people are represented on that council. Every Arcata resident has access to a quality arts education from transitional kindergarten through continuing education. We have a, a Playhouse Artist in Schools program and work that we do in Arcata and throughout the city, and so really working with those Arcata schools to make sure that that happens. Arcata works to become a financially feasible place to live as an artist. What an awesome goal. And you could even take out as an artist, but just trying to make it so that some of the work that's happening with the Gateway will actually support this goal, so that as the Gateway Plan moves forward with some of the, um, community, what am I, what do I call them? The community amendments? Benefits, thank you very much. I always want to call them amendments, but that's not what they are. That's in your garden, people. That's in your garden. So, um, uh, just looking forward to that and how we can get some of that development funding coming back into, um, a, a fund for artists, for housing, for, um, making things happen in the city of Arcata. You know, things that happen, you know, sometimes for not much money, but also to make sure that there's a place for artists and aging artists to live, because that is a big thing as well. The arts function as an avenue of connection between HSU and the broader community. We do work with Cal Poly and are looking at some partnerships coming up through Playhouse Arts, and I know that the Creative Sanctuary has a really robust relationship with Cal Poly. The Arcata Strategic Arts Plan is used as a tool to secure funding for arts in Arcata. That is great. I have used the Strategic Arts Plan in funding through the National Endowment for Arts. It will happen again. We'll probably give it three years, and then we'll be back and able to get more funding again. Just the arts funding world is, as you can imagine, severely impacted by what, what is going on right now. And as soon as you put the words increase equity with some funding for the arts, you are no longer eligible. So we have DEI all over our website, so I'm sure we'll be cut out of some national funding. The city and Playhouse Arts, as Arcata's local arts agency, have a more formalized relationship and achieve planned goals in partnership. I would like to say that that has been an outstanding thing with this council and with this staff, that we really have, um, formalized our relationship. We know what's going on with each other, who's doing what, and how things are affecting the, the city, the city staff, and, and Playhouse Arts as well. That, I think that that is a great relationship that I really value, and I don't see it happening a lot of places in, um, the world or in the United States. And when I go to Artists for Democracy things and talk to people from other cities, they're like, you what? You, you talk to your city staff? You can actually, that's crazy. So, uh, good job, good job on, um, the city of Arcata, staff and council, and, um, the artists in the community to really make those relationships work in places where sometimes they just aren't. You know, my goal was to put an artist on every committee. That's not happened, but the artists are really on a lot of committees, and a lot of those opinions are coming forward and, and making some really positive change. So that's the goals.
Great. Thank you, Jackie. So that was a really great summary, I think, of, of really how the city has engaged with the Strategic Arts Plan goals in partnership with the Playhouse. And, and truly, I cannot underscore how integral having the Strategic Arts Plan has been in, in, um, really putting some energy behind strengthening the relationship between the city and the local arts agency. So it's, it's really been instrumental in that, you know, particularly. Um, and so with that being said, now that we've, we've framed the broader Strategic Arts Plan, um, and, and the, the development process, I wanted to highlight some of what we have been doing in the last three years. And I should point out that it is not random that we are here three years later, um, presenting to council, but the Strategic Arts Plan did include a three-year review, because it is intended to be iterative, dynamic, something that gets engaged with, um, and, and updated or adjusted as, as times and situations change. So that being said, um, twenty twenty-two, the year after the ASAP, for short, was adopted, the city and Playhouse developed the Art Around Town Guidelines, as we've come to call them. And what that is, is they're guidelines that anyone in the community can use to propose public art, so that we really have a clear process for how public art in the city is reviewed and approved, should anyone want to propose public art. And it's also guidelines that we use to, um, review and approve our city-sponsored art, so really just creating a process for public art in the city. That flows right into the public art review process and the local arts and culture panel that Jackie had mentioned. So we have a clear process for how art gets reviewed, and, um, the city and Arcata Playhouse have really worked to develop a, a core group of people that can be iterative, so it's not meant to be, um, represented by fixed community members or community groups. Really, we want to bring in that dynamic and, and new perspectives as, um, you know, the arts. as, you know, the arts culture changes. And that panel serves to really act as our, I would say, like, technical experts in really reviewing as well as shaping our calls for art that we've seen over the past few years. So in 2022, we sort of laid the groundwork for future calls for art. And then in 2023, the city and Playhouse Arts released our first call for art. And that was funded by the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA funds, that were provided to the city during the COVID-19 pandemic, really with the intent of providing economic relief and some economic development funding during the hard times of the pandemic. And so part of those funds were used to fund the call for art. Our inaugural call for art, which was to paint fire hydrants all throughout the downtown corridor. And those were painted in the G and Eighth Street corridors, G and H Street corridors, as well as the Eighth and Ninth Street corridors. We thought that this was a really clear-cut inaugural call for art. Fire hydrants are all fixed. They're small. It was a way to engage with the process in a new, easy way. We also surveyed the public to understand what themes the community might want to see and what connectivity meant to them. We thought that fire hydrants connecting the downtown corridors was a relevant theme. And so we got good feedback from the committee, or from the community, that then the Arts and Culture Panel reviewed the proposals for. And that resulted in painting 20 fire hydrants downtown, which to this date, we continue to get positive feedback on.
And they're on the city of Arcata website, as well as on the Playhouse website. And you can, it's interactive, so you can click and find out about the artist and where it is.
And we have it as a story map. Like Jackie said, you can kind of go through the GIS and the different fire hydrants will pop up and talk about the artists. There we go. That's part of it.
Just like we said.
So this is just a brief map of where those fire hydrants were. There's the cover of our brochure and then a list of the artists in the top right corner. 2024, we're sort of moving out of the calendar year territory and into the fiscal year territory, as it were. The city released our second call for arts. And this call for arts, we got a little more adventurous with the successful first call for arts, all being fire hydrants. We thought that we would broaden the second call for arts to have community members propose particular public infrastructure. We had some public infrastructure identified as possible locations. We invited different media. We had a performance. So we really wanted to open up the creativity even more with our second call for arts. And additionally, we brought in the Arts and Culture Panel, not just in the review of the proposals, but also in the crafting of the call for art to help create that sense of community ownership and to help the Arts and Culture Panel facilitate distributing that call for art and getting the word out to their various community networks.
And we also tried to define with that committee, what is public art? Because we look at public art as murals or fire hydrants and looked at how do we look at physical art and performances and happenings and parades as public art as well. So that was a big thing within the Arts and Culture Panel of talking about that.
And I will note that seven artists were selected. You can see, actually, right outside the council chambers, we have a little display that showcases all the different artwork that was developed through that call for art. And as it were, the Lost Coast Outposts picked up on one of the sculpture call for arts that was installed just today. So.
Oh, great.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of art has kind of sprung, sprung up throughout the community over the last fiscal year. One other thing I didn't note earlier is through the call for arts, calls for art, we have really been focusing on creating opportunities for emerging artists to develop their portfolios and engage with public art. So we've really been prioritizing some newer emerging artists. And it's been quite exciting to see some of those artists actually get additional commissioned artwork and opportunities through having this, you know, resume oppo, resume building opportunity, for lack of a better term. And so our second call for art, the 2024-2025 Call for Art, was also funded with those ARPA funds. So that brings us to our current fiscal year, which is '25-'26. City staff, Playhouse Arts, and our Arts and Culture Panel are just finalizing. Eye out for that. I won't share too much detail. Other than to say, this next call for art is substantially less. The first couple were in the $50,000 to $60,000 range through those ARPA funds. This year, the call for art is closer to $15,000. And the council approved that funding source through a recreation art-related trust fund that we had some residual funds for. But there will be a need to provide ongoing funding and support to the local arts community, which I will use as the segue to this slide we're looking at now, which is our ongoing and looking ahead piece. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say something about that photo that's there. That is Steve Saltzman in his neighborhood and just, not just an Arcata resident, but he got an idea that they wanted to paint this in their neighborhood. And he is so excited about it that he really wants to help other people do it and work their way through the channels of how to do it through the city of Arcata. So that was a very exciting development. And, you know, with, as the Playhouse, we helped him and worked with him on that as well. So that's Steve Saltzman. So looking ahead, we are engaging with the city of Arcata and California Arts in the Parks, doing a project called Outside Arts: Light and Dark. And that is a project that will go over four seasons over the next year. And we will be doing things in Arcata parks. It's a City of Arcata Arts in Parks program. We just did a storytelling in Mountain View Park last Saturday. We're doing bookmaking and poetry reading in Chevret Vasade. The idea is to highlight parks that are not so frequently used, like Redwood Park or other parks. So not that we will never be in those parks, but really trying to look at the broad diversity and what the, how many awesome parks the city of Arcata has. And so that program has started, and it will end next fall. Early September, we'll be doing an outdoor spectacle, big hoo-ha in Valley West at Carlson Park. So it's all free to the community, and it's in connection with the city of Arcata and Emily and working to bring that people out into the parks in all seasons. So it's fall, winter, spring, summer, and then a big presentation. So to get outside even when it's raining, because we always think of parks as like sitting on the grass, which you can do in the winter, but, you know, it's cold. So also, within that is a project that we're doing called The Big Read, where we received a grant from the Mid-Atlantic. I can't remember their full name, Mid-Atlantic and the National Endowment for the Arts, to distribute 600 poetry books of Ada Lamon's book, You Are Here: Poetry in the Natural World, to do a very large community book group. So I still have some of those books available. We have teens, seniors. We have given out about 400 of the books to people in the community. And we're doing events throughout the region with, in connection with the library. So the Humboldt County Library is doing one tonight, actually, collaging on some of the poetry. We'll have a teen poetry slam of some of the things, whatever they're inspired from. So really trying to engage people through literary arts and through our parks and our natural wonders. So these poems are collected from around the United States. Ada Lamon collected them, and they're all about where we live, what our environment is. So those are two big projects that the Playhouse is on right now that will really, I think, have a big impact on Arcata parks. So I'm glad that the city of Arcata is committed to those parks. Of course, we'll be around to review public arts proposals initiated. We're going to release with, the city's going to release and implement the call for arts. What else was I going to say here? Oh, this weekend, Chevret Vasade, bookmaking with Katie Belknap from the Creative Sanctuary. I'll be there with my lawn chair and a cup of hot cider to read some poems and talk about poetry and make some garden flags. So it's 1:00 to 4:00 in Chevret Vasade Park. So Saturday, November 22nd, 1:00 to 4:00, Chevret Vasade Park. And then we have other things coming up after the holidays that go to playhousearts.org, community events, and you can find out what we're up to there. So those are exciting things with working with the city of Arcata. Go Emily.
Yeah, so I think to, to wrap up, really ongoing and looking ahead, we're going to continue to do the good work that we're doing. City staff and Playhouse Arts will continue to collaborate. We'll continue reviewing public arts proposals and hoping that that garners some momentum within the community. We'll release our city-sponsored call for arts. And I have to, of course, at the end of our presentation, make the plug for the importance of continuing to fund public art programs and advocating that really it's funding well-spent that ripples out into the community beyond just the cost of the art itself and really helps to pull Arcata together as a community in a really unique way that not a lot, not a lot of other communities offer, as Jackie mentioned.
Yeah, just that connection between staff, council, and the artists in the community, I think, has great legs for health, for wellness, for tourism, for development, for innovation, for, you know, getting our kids critical thinking skills. All of those things, I think, are huge elements of living in Arcata that I appreciate.
And so with that, we conclude our presentation, our review of the Strategic Arts Plan, three-year review, and welcome any questions or feedback the council has.
Yeah, ask the council if you have any questions, anybody? Yes, you do. Well, let's start over here with Stacy.
Thank you. Thanks for that fun presentation. That's what happens when you get a theater person presenting. So Jackie, I think we're going to need you to just come to our meetings and just, you know, keep it going.
I love it so much, Stacy.
I'm sure you do. I'm sure you do.
Just want to sit here all night.
All right, we heard that. She's committed. No, in all seriousness, how can folks who want to join The Big Poetry Read come across those books?
They can come to the Playhouse. They can call the Playhouse or email info@playhousearts.org. They can go on our website and contact us through the website. They can show up in Chevret Vasade Park on Saturday, and we will have all of those books. We kind of haul them around with us wherever we go. And then you just sign them out. You can take, some people have taken up to 15 books because they have a book club, and that will work too. The city, the library here in Arcata has books to sign out as well and sort of book packages. So call, email, show up. We're open 11:00 to 2:00, Tuesday through Friday. Someone's always in the office. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't really have a question, but I just wanted to thank you guys for presenting and that just, you know, the Strategic Arts Plan has been one of like the happier, lighter things that we've got to enjoy and pass and be part of while being on council, a good majority of us. And just to see then in the community, the hard work, the Eighth and Ninth Street corridor is, you know, where I live and walk often and getting to, you know, enjoy and recognize all of the different artists and interact with it online and check everything out is just such, you know, a cool experience. And that, you know, looking at the reporting and seeing it and making it available to the community, I think, is a really important piece of that. So just thank you guys for all that you've done to make this happen. And, you know, again, overcoming funding challenges and being creative. I mean, that's, well, that's what you guys do, but just thank you so much and great presentation.
Go down to Meredith, and then we'll come to you.
No, just again, thank you so much. You know, the funny thing was, I drove past that sculpture and I'm like, is that new? I don't remember seeing that. And then I saw the article in MOCO today about it. So again, thank you. You know, the art around here is one of the things that makes Arcata so special. So I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Yeah, thank you for the highlight of the three years. And I really, really love the idea or the goal of an artist on every community committee. So let's do it. The, I think about the broken window theory and how pride in one's community is so connected to art. I feel like if you repair the windows, people are less likely to create more broken windows or litter. And when we have art in the community, it also makes that ownership, if you will, and pride in community. I am really looking forward to the spectacle in Valley West and Carlson Park. I love the new mural out there that happened from last year's strategic art. That mural right there is beautiful. And if you haven't had a chance to see these incredible murals that are out on Carlson Park Drive that Isaac Lyons did, just out of this world. So yeah, thank you for all the work that you do. And yeah, looking forward to seeing more art.
Yeah, there, I just want to clarify that there were a lot of artists on that mural. And Julia Finkelstein from Epitome Gallery was really instrumental in sort of spearheading a lot of those murals. But there's a lot going on in Carlson Park that is really great. And there will be workshops there as well before, leading up to the spectacle in the, in the September.
So I always remember when you put the medallions on Eighth and Ninth by the Playhouse. And that was the very beginning of trying to create a lot of art and make that more of an art district. And of course, I'm, I look at them now, and, you know, over the years, everything fades.
Yep.
But maybe one day they won't be so faded anymore.
Or maybe there'll be something new.
Or maybe so. But I just think that that was a really good thing that you did. And it involved a lot of people. It created a lot of interest. And so I appreciate that you did that. And every day, when I have an opportunity to look at those traffic signal boxes that we have on H and G, I'm hoping that one day we'll be able to get those with art on them too, because they're pretty unpleasant, or they're not attractive. I guess you could say it that way.
Yeah, I can actually just add to that briefly. We do have an artist who has worked with me in submitting a preliminary application to Caltrans, and they provided initial positive feedback. And we're working on the full-scale application, which will take a little bit of time. But hopefully, we will have art on those particular utility boxes before too long.
But thank you. I think that'll be a really, a very nice attribute for us to have on Samoa Boulevard when that happens. And thank you for everything and your time this evening, and so have fun. Thank you.
Which you will have.
I'm sad to have to leave.
No, you promised. You promised.
You'll be back for sure. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That'll move us on to oral communications. Everyone's going to clap, Jackie. Clap, 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 clap. Then we'll go into oral and written communications. This is the early time limit. The city council values your comments. The public comment period allows people to address the council no matter matters not on the agenda. This early section of public comment is limited to 15 minutes, and you're allowed two minutes each. If you prefer to have a full three minutes of your time, you are granted that at the end of the meeting under item number 12, where speakers have three minutes altogether. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the agenda, and the council may respond to statements. There will also be a time to provide public comments specific to each item that's on the agenda as we review it as the council. So we have the protocol manual at our last meeting, and we came up that we will have eight cards that'll be all the same color. And I'm assuming they're all there. And so we'll take our first eight speakers, and please come forward. And anyone else that's interested in speaking tonight, would you please come forward and line up? I appreciate that. So.
Thank you. My name is Sean. I'm very grateful to be able to have this opportunity to address you guys. And my comments are, again, regarding the sister city between Arcata and Gaza City. This is a local initiative that we've been working on for a while. And I know that some of you are supportive. And I just want to just underline how much the people of Gaza City really want this. Not just the representatives of Gaza City Municipality, but also the children of Gaza City Municipality have said that they want this. They've told us, as well as teens in Gaza City, want us to be a sister city with Gaza City. Humanitarian aid is not a crime. That's what a sister city would entail, is humanitarian aid and cultural exchange. Luckily, we still live in a democracy, supposedly, right? And so we are actually legally allowed to do this. So what's stopping us, right? We can do this. And so let's lay out a roadmap of how we're going to get this done and do it. You know, the people of Gaza City are enduring incredibly rough conditions. It's raining out here right now. You know, the homeless here are having trouble. And we need to be, you know, caring for our own homeless people, you know. But we don't have to choose between doing the right thing for local homeless and doing good for people in Gaza City either. We can do both, and in fact, we should do both. It's a moral imperative, in fact, for us to do what we can to stop genocide when it happens. It's a moral imperative, in fact, for us to do what we can to stop genocide when it happens. And when our countries have that legal duty and they're failing to represent us in implementing that duty, that duty then falls on us to do what we can to stop the genocide and resist the genocide. And by providing material support for children to live, we are actually helping to resist a genocide in real time. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please. Come forward, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Si. I'm a local freshman here at Cal Poly. And before I start speaking, I want to say that I'm not a representative of the campus, nor am I representative of housing. I'm a resident of housing. And while I do have a role within like my local area council and, you know, a spot on the Resident Housing Association, me being here tonight is reflective on like issues that I want to bring up. And those issues would be the water quality, right? For the months that I've been here, residents have brought up the fact that the water is not like adequate and the fact that like, you know, it has an off taste. And many people report feeling sick because of the water. We've made motions to our local residents housing association to get funding to do water testing, the students ourselves, but we were denied initially on September 22nd. In October, we were told that our water wasn't being filtered, and that was of great concern to us. And, you know, we've reached out to maintenance and we've reached out to our local, I guess, the people that are in charge of residents for us, you know, to try to get the water, you know, looked at and tested regularly and maybe even get a filter for water in residence housing. But we've gotten no responses despite, you know, multiple, multiple, like, you know, reaches out. So we really wanted to know what the city can do for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Nezzy Beck again. I just really wanted to talk to you about, I started to leave and then it's raining outside. And I'm lucky I have a raincoat. But there are so many people out there in this community that don't even have a jacket. And we provide a lot of those kinds of things. But how are we going to find places for people? I know you've done some amazing things here with the Safe Parking Program. You found property, you rented it, you made it available. That was a program that lasted for a couple of years. There's a lot of funds put into that whole thing. It seems to me pretty simple to have an opportunity for people to be in place and to be safe. And there are an awful lot of people in the community that really don't have anything to do with government, but would like the support of government to help bring something online that actually uses the resources that we have and that we share and does something to honor all of the ways in which people are supporting our unhoused community members now. But in a way where we can do it and make it much easier on everybody by finding stable places for people. I know you have the ability to locate some of those things, and I know you have funding. And I'm going to ask you for some of it pretty soon. But I really hope that it's going to be possible. It's winter coming on, it's wet out. We've already had situations where people have been threatened by wind and rain, and that's not going away. And our situation is only going to get worse. Eighty-five percent of the extremely low-income people in Humboldt County spend over 50% of their income on rent. Housing to have a home is out of their reach, and it's going to be more so for more people. Please, let's start working together. Set the task force, convene it, invite us. We'll really work hard on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please. Thank you.
My name's Logan, and I've lived in Arcata just this year. This is the first city council meeting I've spoken up at, so I'm really happy to be here and have this opportunity. You know, and the whole time I've lived here, I came from a place that was very insulated from highway noise. And coming here, it was just so stark. I was like expecting to come up to, you know, the redwoods and be kind of like sheltered from the noise. And to me, it's just been constant. I mean, like, I can go almost a mile into the redwoods and I can still hear the noise from there. And I tried going out to the bird sanctuary, and that's also the same thing. I can hear the highway noise all the way out there. And there's already been documentation of the effects on traffic noise on people by Caltrans and birds. And there was a study published in Science, that's the name of the, I'm not just saying Science. There is a study published using zebra finches in 2024 showing that there was a 19% reduction in birds hatching. And we have that bird sanctuary like right there, you know, it's right next to the highway. It would be great if we could reduce that noise. I understand that the city doesn't really have any influence over that, but I was wondering if this is like the right place to start? And maybe we can all talk about it as a community? Because there's also trash on the highway that is going to get filtered into the bay. You know, just, not just in terms of noise, but it's affecting everyone, I know. Like, you can't not walk around and hear it. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Heidi Curtis. I was reading over what some of the opiate funds could have been chosen to use for, and housing was one of them. And they pretty much want people homeless so we can fit into a margin so they can get grants for it, which is sick and disgusting. I've been sleeping outside, of course. I was staying at a friend of mine's house who lives in the Grove. But Darlene, after last week's meeting, told me I was no longer allowed at the Grove. As I don't know if that was retaliation for me speaking up for myself or calling them out for having half the rooms empty and leaving the lights on day and night in empty rooms. But either way, so I've been out on the street in the rain. I've been a victim of domestic violence, all sorts of things. And I don't want to use those as a reason I should have a house or a roof or safety. I'm a woman, I'm afraid. You know, and art doesn't need funding, it needs talent, okay? And at least that's how I see it. That's the way they've showed me. Because, I mean, what do they give me? A pencil and a piece of paper. And, you know, I have written requests for funding to send into the Playhouse official. I did it officially, and I've been totally ignored. I wasn't even counseled on it. I've had multiple books of both my poetry and my short stories just come up disappear from the R-Space area in multiple times. Other art pieces just totally disappear. And people who are asking for funding don't even make art, they're con artists. They're not helping. I have all their emails, because I have all their emails, the R-Space emails, it doesn't matter how I do. And if you guys would like to look over some of those so you could see what I'm talking about, I would love to meet up with you guys in the daytime sometime and do that. But I'm asking for help for housing.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is George Green, live in Arcata. What I'm wondering is whether the previous Arcata Coastal Zone enrolled by the more rigorous Coastal Guide is being supplanted by what was the municipal code, ruled by the less stringent municipal code, with the exception that the word coastal was added. And also that the previous coastal development permit is no longer needed, thus turning Arcata into more of a municipal city rather than a coastal city to a great extent. What this will lead to is greater ease of building, more congestion, buildings closer together, coastal concerns. The positive aspect would result, I guess, in generation of more money and also more available housing. But maybe at the detriment to its coastal charm. Now, I have a personal connection with this because an apartment complex was built in back of me. And it was thought that that place was not in the coastal zone, but it was, and a mistake was made. But because of that, it meant that I wasn't given written notice when it was being built. But there just was a notice posted on the bulletin board outside community development. That's the kind of changes that I'm talking about. Also, the setback where the municipal code is only like five feet rather than the two-to-one height to length of the setback. Anyway, there are things like that that may be a factor, that maybe, maybe it's all done, but it should be considered. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
In the beginning of this month, we started off with the whole food scarce and everything, and I watched our community come together from different areas and different places, which is very scary. Like, no matter if you work or don't work, we all experience some kind of fear in that. And, you know, there are resources if they, if like, for instance, I can't go do what I was doing, like cleaning up behind the scene, places that needed it, because I felt like I could do something better than just sit here and look at things and think, hey, it'd be nice to have a cleaner community or whatnot. I got, I'm scared to attempt it as an individual because I'm afraid to lose my job. I have a kid, I have a husband who has breathing devices to breathe at night because getting off of drugs, he has major effects from long use of drugs. And these are things that people don't put in mind. If we had more options to give people, but we have very small. I know plenty of people out here that are living on the street that do want to get clean. And I have reached out to Eureka because it's the only place we have recovery to try to get them in some kind of treatment or whatnot. The thing is, is like, I know I'm not your guys' enemy because I love this town. This town is beautiful, and that's why I'm here. I do pay my own rent here, I do live here, I work here in this community. And it's important for me to let you guys know, like, when we read these, like, yesterday I went to Eureka and I did stand up there with Nezzy. But the thing is, is I fear, I fear there's some kind of dislike from y'all because I haven't had the chance to speak. Yeah, I've spoken with, well, I've interacted with, and it was, is with Kim because I was in that town in Valley West. I'm not in that area no more. I'm in this area where it's, I don't know. I'm just reaching my hand out, asking y'all to help me help you to make this a better community in all areas where it could count. And we wouldn't have so much of this stuff that people don't like to look at all the time and find ways to come to some kind of solution instead of just giving us absolutely nowhere to point people in the right directions. Thank you, and thanks for not putting the time on. You're awesome.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Tricia Murphy. And I'm here to express my support for the sister city with Gaza City, Palestine, and Arcata. And to ask the council members to sign the divestment letter that was written for you. Just ask Calpers to divest in weapons that are going to Israel to commit genocide. I talk a lot about how how wrong I think Israel's for doing this. But I have to say, I'm equally disgusted by my own government for aiding and abetting it. And I don't think I've said that from the podium, but I mean that sincerely. And I want to correct something that I made a mistake on last meeting when I thanked somebody named Pam, who is not on the council, and Stacy, I thanked you both for your support of the sister city and the Calpers letter. Now what I want to do is thank the right people. And I want to thank, I know a lot of you didn't ask for this. You didn't be asked to be dragged into this. And I know it takes courage to go against the genocide, as crazy as it is. But I want to thank you, Sarah Schaefer, for being in support of the sister city and for signing the Calpers letter. I appreciate what you've done, and I appreciate your courage. And Kim White, I want to thank you for the same. Others of you promised that if we proved there was wide support for this, that you would support a sister city. And I don't think you've kept your word. I think this is a time where people are being tested, and it takes courage not careerism to do the right thing.
Thank you very much. And that concludes our oral communications, early oral communications. And we'll go on to the consent calendar. Under the consent calendar, all matters on the consent calendar considered in one, to be routine by the city council and enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If the discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar, considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. Members of the public may comment on any item remaining on the consent calendar in the comment period before the vote. A, approval to waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only of any ordinance on this agenda. B, approve the minutes of the city council's special meeting of November 5, 2025. C, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of November 5, 2025. D, bi-weekly report on disbursements. Is there anything on the agenda a council member would like to remove?
We don't, we don't need to pull it, but on the unmet transit needs, which is B, just for the record.
Wait a minute, you're on the wrong, we're under, we're under consent calendar. And B would be pulling the minutes for the city council's special meeting of 2025.
No, let's wait till, no, let's not do that. I'll correct it in during new business. Thanks.
So is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
We'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I will second.
Okay, all those in favor, signify.
We need to take comment.
Oh, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak on any of these items? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor, sign or saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Under old business, there is none. Under new business, we will move on to, which one are we going to, okay, we'll go on to adopt resolution number 256-20, supporting Humboldt County Association of Governments Regional Housing Needs Allocation Methodology. Thank you very much for a staff report.
Hi, good evening, council. We're going to bring forward some information on the regional housing needs allocation methodology. As discussed at the,
I wonder if we could have the volume turned up a little.
Yeah, can you hear me? So as discussed at the October, is that better? All right, at the October 15 meeting, with input from the seven jurisdictions in Humboldt County, the Humboldt County Association of Governments plan to prepare a 50% jobs, 50% population formula to distribute the RENA allocation. So that's what's shown here on the screen. That would give us about 1,042 total allocation. This would give Arcata a fair data-driven share of the countywide allocation. And linking it to Job Center supports infill by directing housing to areas where there are shorter trips. And this meets our greenhouse gas goals, environmental goals, that type of thing, and also supports infill. And then the population component prevents overallocating to smaller jurisdictions that are more rural and do not have the ability or capacity to develop. So that's why this was chosen as the preferred methodology going forward. So between the time that we prepared the staff report and today, we've had HCD respond back to the Humboldt County Association of Governments expressing some concern about this methodology and wanting us to look at some different, some different factors. Specifically, the objective for including affirmatively furthering fair housing, which they've created this tool, this is a mapping tool that is based on census tracts. And I'm going to let David talk a little bit about that tool.
Excellent. So I want you to know the differences between these two maps. This is Humboldt County. You can see Arcata Bay around here, and here's Arcata. The entire jurisdiction fits in there. This is one census tract that the tool uses to map where high resource areas are. And so the way that they typically judge whether or not you're meeting your furthering fair housing objectives is by ensuring that the RENA is by ensuring that the RENA is distributed into high resource areas. Excuse me, they want to make sure that you're not concentrating, uh, affordable housing in low resource areas and further, um, you know, impacting those jurisdictions and to make sure that affordable housing has an opportunity to be, uh, you know, located in, in places that have high resources and high quality of life. This map is drastically different from this map. This is, uh, down in Los Angeles. You can see Long Beach Airport right here in the middle, which is in its own census tract, has nobody living in it. Uh, but the jurisdictions around Long Beach here, um, are very regular. The census tract falls, uh, largely within those jurisdictions. And so when you're trying to map the resources within a jurisdiction, if that, if that census tract, if that mapping unit aligns with the jurisdiction, you're going to get pretty clear data. Uh, you know, the town where I grew up in, Lakewood here, is a high resource area. Blue is high resource. Uh, down here in, uh, Long Beach, this is in a very industrialized neighborhood where 710 goes through, not so much. And so what the state is trying to do with this tool is to make sure when you go through your RENA process, that you're able to distribute RENA in ways that, uh, allocate towards high resource areas to make sure that you have more housing responsibility in those areas. Uh, so we're going to get, dig into a little bit more detail, uh, looking at, at the bay. But I just want you to reflect on the difference between somebody living in, uh, you know, Myers Flat out here being looped in with somebody who lives in, uh, you know, off California. That's drastically different in terms of geography. So I'm going to turn it over to Jen to look at, um, what's going on and why we have a problem with it.
I think he was talking about Maple Creek, but you get the idea.
Although I do want to acknowledge that Myers Flat is where it's at.
All right. So some of the concerns that we had with this mapping tool, and this was brought up when we decided not to use it in our methodology originally. But the highest resource areas are in the more rural parts of the county. So adding units there increases car dependency and overall VMT, which is counter to many of our other goals. Um, it's also contrary to our infill goals and our infill strategies, which is what we've historically and going forward plan to use, um, in our housing elements. The highest resource areas are also rated moderate or high on the CAL FIRE fire hazard severity map. So I think that that's important to point out as well. It really would not make sense to put a bunch of housing in Maple Creek, for instance. Um, and then as David, as David recognized, the census tracts just don't follow the jurisdictional boundaries, which makes the data difficult to follow and really not as useful as it maybe it is in the city. So I would say that this particular mapping tool is probably not the way to go. Um, and we're going to talk a little bit about how we would like to proceed forward, um, with a recommendation from council, and I'll let David talk about that.
Yeah. So just real quick, before we leave this map, I want you to note that, you know, in Arcata, which, you know, it's hard, hard to see the outlines, but it's, you know, roughly right here. You have about half of it that is labeled high resource area. Um, you know, considerable chunk that is, uh, labeled, you know, moderate, high resource area. And then there's a good proportion, most of this is outside the city of Arcata, that's labeled low resource area. And so using these data, uh, just as they are, um, it would actually appear that Arcata is a, uh, a high resource area alone, when in fact, there's a lot of, um, mixed data in here, including portions that are in the north of Arcata and portions that are south of Samoa, which this gray means that there's not enough data to tell. So again, just reinforcing the idea that this is a, a really poor tool to use in order to, to make this decision about whether or not we're affirmatively furthering fair housing. Um, and, you know, what we think, oh, next steps, what, what we think is that the method that y'all already recommended, that we took through the public process, the, the collaboration process that we did with all the other jurisdictions, we worked with the ED of HCOG and made a recommendation for 50-50 split. We believe that those do in fact reflect affirmatively furthering fair housing, uh, in our methodology. Given this new information from HCD and the fact that HCOG's board is going to be looking at this, uh, tomorrow, and then in, in December, uh, they have, uh, planned to, to make a determination to actually act on, uh, the methodology. We wanted to sort of modify our recommendation from what you see in the, the staff report and the, uh, resolution that's in the staff report. Um, because we want the opportunity to, um, you know, double down on the 50-50 split, as you've already recommended we do, but then also try and convey to the state that the, that, that tool doesn't work for our area and that in fact, we can demonstrate that our methodology does reflect affirmatively furthering fair housing. So we've got, um, a revised portion of your, um, revised recommendation here, and we'll, we'll hand this out so you can read it. But I wanted to put it on the screen for the public to see as well. That essentially says that, you know, the city council supports the proposed RENA methodology that allocates housing responsibility based on 50% protected population growth and 50% on existing employment. That was in your original resolution. And then the second bullet that we would like you to consider adding is recommending the Humboldt County Association of Governments work with the affected jurisdictions to demonstrate that the 50-50 method meets all five statutory objectives pursuant to government code blah de blah, including affirmatively furthering fair housing. I think we can make this case. When I read the, the email that we received from HCD, it appears to me that they did not do due diligence. It appears to me that they were working through a checklist and they got to the affirmatively furthering fair housing checkbox and they said, "We don't see this in your methodology, so we're likely to reject it." Um, and I think we can spend the next month or so, uh, working with HCD, working together, uh, you know, with the, the associated jurisdictions to really prove this case. The way the 50-50 allocation works right now, uh, you know, Eureka and Arcata have, you know, a, a high number, not as high as if it would have been 60-40 split, uh, but we have a relatively high number. I don't think you can argue that Arcata isn't a high resource area. And so it shouldn't be, uh, receiving less, or it, it, it shouldn't receive less because of that. But I also think that Eureka is a high resource area. And if you use this tool, Eureka's, uh, numbers would go down because they would be considered a lower resource area. So that, that just doesn't jive for me. And then in addition, what Jen had pointed out about the, um, the county receiving a larger share if we use these numbers. Even if we can't demonstrate that the, this, this methodology affirmatively furthers fair housing, I think we can easily demonstrate that the tool doesn't work and we have to come up with some other way of demonstrating, or some other way of, of affirmatively furthering fair housing.
Can I point out one other thing too? I did want to also point out that, um, the specific factors or weighting is not required. So, uh, putting some weight towards this methodology isn't something that's required. We do just have to point out how, what we've already presented fits with that particular goal.
So we'd be happy to answer any questions and take public comment.
Thank you. Who has questions to start off with?
Yeah, I just remember we had a pretty robust study session about this too. So, I don't know, Stacy, you are the representative on, on HCOG. I'm interested to hear if you have any council perspective.
Um, well, this is news to me this evening, um, but I think probably the, I, we're all probably feeling the same, like going what? Because it just seems opposite of what we've been working for to be fair and to be, um, you know, yes, there is, there's more land in the county, but then we have massive sprawl and that's exactly what we're working to avoid. So when I looked at the chart, the new one, it looked like Arcata and Eureka didn't need a lot of housing and it should go everywhere else. And that's the opposite of what we hear from folks. So, um, maybe this would be the beginning of your relationship of working to reform with RENA. Maybe this is your way in.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think I'm going to be in my third year of the CalCities, the Housing Economic and Community Development Committee. And when our first meeting in January, I hope that we can do something, you know, to affect legislation, but that might be too late from what it sounds like. Is that true?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the statutory timeline, um, but I, I think that, you know, wherever and whenever we can make that message heard, we should be doing that. Yeah, I, you know, this is just a classic example of the state doing something that works in, you know, in, in metropolitans, but doesn't work in the rural jurisdictions, so.
And, and I do, uh, agree, Councilmember Matthews, it's even if we're kind of locked into this cycle, um, we all know things move slow. So starting that conversation and really, um, trying to get staff level folks and others in on the process, just so that it can work. We all want it to work. We want to build more housing. We want all communities to be fair about their housing. So I think whenever you can, if you can get that ball rolling in any way, shape or form, thank you.
Your request is that we adopt this ordinance and, um, or this resolution. So Kimberly, do you have anything, and Sarah, anything?
I was just going to say, it sounds like David's ready to get to work on building some, some more housing, it sounds like, so.
You guys have been, you've been kind of work on the RENA numbers for quite some time because they're so out of balance. So Kimberly, did you have anything you wanted to say?
If we're going to adopt the new resolution, they're the, just basically just seeing the new one in place, or?
Yeah, we'll adopt this one. You have here...
Because they, they have the same number.
Yeah, it would be the same number because it hasn't been adopted yet. So it would just be to, uh, adopt the resolution with the, uh, staff recommended changes.
Okay. So then I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 256-20, supporting Humboldt County Association of Governments Regional Housing Needs Allocation Methodology with the staff recommendations. Anything else?
A second.
I think that works. A second and let's make sure we take public comment.
I just, I wanted to ask one more question.
And direct staff to forward to the HCOG board.
Yes, it has to go to, yes. And we have to have public comment.
I, I just wanted to ask one more question. Is there anything that, that, if there's a meeting tomorrow at 4:30, is there anything that, that we can do like before then or at then? I don't know. We probably can't all go to that meeting because of the Brown Act violation, but I...
Uh, yeah, I don't think it's necessary at this time. We've been corresponding with, uh, Brendan, the ED for HCOG. Jen jumped on it right away when this, uh, email from HCD came out today. Um, and, um, so he's, he's well aware of our concerns. Um, I've already sort of initiated the, hey, we should get our, you know, get the band back together. Let's get our, you know, all the jurisdictions together to, uh, you know, talk through this. And the action at the HCOG, there's no formal action at the HCOG board tomorrow. It's just to introduce the methodology. But I do think between now and when they plan to take action in December, that we should, you know, get to a place where we're, you know, we're resolved. If anything changes, I feel like we have direction from the council already. And so we will act on that direction when we have these conversations with the other jurisdictions. And if anything changes, obviously we will bring it back to you. And, and my recommendation to, uh, COG staff will be to delay taking action until we can resolve this with HCD. If we send in the methodology and HCD doesn't, um, agree with it, they can take up to 90 days to tell us that they don't agree with it. And then we'll have to submit a new methodology, which will trigger a new 60 to 90 day process. Um, so I think it's important for us to make sure we get it right the first time so we don't have to delay that extra 90 days.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, but no second, and we have public comment.
May I interrupt before we go to public comment? I just want to make sure I heard that correctly. Um, so I heard adopting the resolution supporting the Humboldt County Association of Governments draft regional housing needs allocation methodology with staff recommended amendments, is that? And, and then to also direct staff to forward resolution number 25620 to the HCOG board?
Is that correct?
Yes.
But there isn't a second.
I will second it.
Thank you. Now for public comment, please.
I haven't been able to hear a lot of what you're talking about in this room because the sound and the sound system are not working for me. But I know enough about what the state mandates and what we really need. And, um, I've long really felt why we don't do more to, um, really challenge the state. We're an exceptional part of the, of the state in terms of our location, our, um, resources, our, um, you know, isolation a little bit. There's just so many issues that are, uh, special to our area and the city of Arcata that we have long needed to lobby for them to not cookie cutter us like they're doing into big cities and all. And I really do think we need to be advocates instead of just passive recipients of stuff. And then we have to try and juggle it and, and maneuver around it and do all this kind of stuff. We really need to start being advocates for our region and our community to not allow the state to tell us certain things that aren't really realistic or, um, futuristic or applicable or sustainable, um, in how we want to proceed into the future. So I'm glad that this is all being talked about. But, you know, we really need to, you know, be that advocate, uh, at the state level before we get these directives, um, on what they think we're supposed to do.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on this? Anyone on Zoom? Okay. We will, um, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. And I'm going to call for a five-minute recess before we get into our next, uh, item. Yes, we can. So what I want to do, no, I want, what I want to do is take the TikTok first. Is that okay with you? So we voted to move an agenda item around. That's a transaction and use tax oversight committee. And we'd like to thank you, Steve, for being here this evening. And would you like to introduce anything, Tabitha, before we start? Thank you.
The work that the two talk committee does, we, you don't hear from them very often. It's usually once a year. And remind you that you did give them a pretty big, sort of doubled the duties that they're going to take on in this next year with taking on oversight of Measure H. And, and I know Mr. Cole is going to kind of acknowledge that and start talking a little bit about the work that we're doing for that. One of the things that I think is really important is that the committee has committed to that task and also has decided that they'd like to be involved a little bit earlier in the process. So we're meeting this in December. We're putting together sort of some outlines on how we can better account for and report back to the public how we use the Measure H money. And also make recommendations, the committee making recommendations back to all of you on some of those uses so that there's a little bit more interaction and it's transparent to everybody who's watching what we're doing with those funds. So I will certainly introduce the Vice Chair, Steve Cole, and I think he's going to do a summary of the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five and kind of talk about some of the issues that the two talk has addressed and also some of the things that they'd like to do in the future.
Thank you very much. And thank you for coming, Vice Chair, Mr. Cole.
A good evening. I'd like to start by saying thank you. The folks in this room, the DS and so forth, volunteer their time to serve our city, and I thank you for that, for the time that you spend. Thank you, our staff and Netra and Tabitha have been excellent people to represent the city as we meet as a two talk committee. I've been on the committee for a while and served under, I think, five different police chiefs and two financial directors. I would just reiterate, the charge that we had as a committee originally was to divide the the monies that are derived from the transaction use tax, a third to public safety and two thirds to street infrastructure. That was the original charge for the committee. And it has moved around, especially as the police department has suffered the losses of personnel, the funds have been moved to help them with the signing bonuses and so forth that are here. So the committee is recommending that we gradually move back toward the original intent of the measure. I know that as a committee member, the first thing I do is I look at Public Works and I look at the police chief and say, have you talked about the split and is it going to work for you this coming year? And I don't think we've ever had any disagreements with that. When they say that they've agreed to divide the funds a certain way, we've pretty much just agreed that was, that was appropriate. There was, I, I think the report that you have in front of you is, is, as it is, there's, the bar graphs and everything show how the funds were arrived at this year and how they were apportioned. My one comment would be on Measure H, the committee somewhat reluctantly took it on. But once we got into the weeds, we said, let's do it. I think the biggest concern that the committee has at this point in time is how to apportion the Measure H funds because there are a number of categories that they were to be used for. So I personally can rely heavily on staff to help me make a decision on how the funds should be done. Colin Fisk is on the committee and he is very interested in having funds used for public transportation, bicycle and pedestrian uses and so forth like that. So his voice will be one of the main voices on the committee. But I'm looking again to the city for, for their guidance. And if we make recommendations, I want to make sure that what we, what we give you as a recommendation is just that. And it's for you to consider and then make decisions appropriately. So I will, I'll be as honest as I can and interact as best I can with the people that are, that have a stake in the matter to represent them. That's really all I have to, to say tonight. Are there any questions that you might have of me as a committee member?
Counsel, do you have questions that you would like to address at this time?
No, but thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. This is a pretty exhaustive report and I just really appreciate all your hard work. Would it be worthwhile to have a Measure H study session or is just that too much?
You know, I think, I think once the committee has an opportunity to really work out their approach to it, I, I do think that it would be useful in the spring or early spring to come back during the budget season and have a work session where maybe they present that info. Not only the methodology for what they're looking for and, and their parameters, but also those recommendations to, to use. So we can certainly look at building that into the budget schedule.
Yeah, I mean, the way that we did budgeting last year with those like three days, that was wonderful. And just adding just a segment on Measure H, because I know that the community is really interested in how we're spending this one. So again, thank you for taking on that additional duty. I really appreciate that.
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on that as well. Definitely want to acknowledge that you guys have taken on something that, that we appreciate the role that you're doing in that. I also concur with that it might be a good idea to get back to the ratio that we originally intended. And also want to point out that the money that has been invested in streets infrastructure has set up us for match grants and other opportunities and well done for that. And I think that it might not be a bad idea to see what we can do a little bit more as a council to get more involved in, in the community, of course. So there was a couple other questions, but I think if I had later on in the report, will I have an opportunity? Or I guess I had a couple of things about the Arcata Police Department portion of that. Is that, okay, great, great. All right, great. So I just am looking over here and I see five locations that are the top. And so when you add those numbers up, there's nearly eighty five hundred, well, eight thousand four hundred ninety seven for these top locations and more than half, of course, by no surprise, are in Valley West. And I really appreciate that we are expanding the community ambassador program into Valley West. I think that everything that we can do is going to be helpful. I got to see some of the ambassadors hard at work at our Valley West Park and Holland Drive. Yeah, I just, I know that we're going to be splitting this and so it's going to be hard to fill that gap for the police department. But I do agree that we should get back to the two thirds, one third. And maybe we can find another way just to make sure that we are not falling between the cracks in these other neighborhoods that really need some attention.
Thank you. Other council members?
Quick, quick question. Just, I know in Measure G, you guys have the split. That was part of the, the legislation for that. But in H, there isn't a specific percentage, correct?
No, there isn't.
That's correct.
So which I can see why that would be a little daunting to try to figure out how to do that.
That's why we were, honestly, that's why the committee hesitated to embrace it partly at the beginning because we saw as many, there were many different categories. And our concern was we may not be qualified to make good decisions. So we're depending on input from staff and from the council as we deliberate on how this fund should be apportioned, what we should recommend to the council.
And I, I do want to clarify that Measure G is also a general tax. So there, there, the apportionment was not built into the legislation. But it was the promise in selling it and also in sort of, it was the commitment that was made at the time it was passed. And we've, the city has done a good job over almost nearly coming up on almost twenty years in twenty twenty eight in really making those two areas, public safety and streets, their priorities. And so we have, the, the city has stuck with it for twenty years. And I think that's a really important message. And it is partly because of the Oversight Committee, the two talk committee.
No, I think that is really important to point out because that's oftentimes why general tax measures sometimes don't pass. The public is, has been disappointed by their leadership and how the funds are used. So thank you for all of you for the, all this time who have, you know, honored our voters by doing that.
Okay, so I'm really happy that you did take on Measure H because, and we're going to get a list of all the things our director is going to be providing us with a list of what projects are being funded through Measure H. Like right now, we have the bathrooms that are open up in Redwood Park. And that just happened. It took a while to make that all work, but that's a Measure H fund. And so I'm, and I remember a while back, this is a long time ago, because it was Dobie Class when he was our, in charge of our engineering, whatever department it was then, it's been changed since then. And we had a sign on K Street that said, part of the funding for redoing K Street was Measure G. So I think it's really important for us to think about what we're funding from H or G or whatever it might be. It's just to let the public know that how their funds are being utilized. So I'm really thankful that you're going to be making that effort to come up with a plan where we're using those funds. And then it'll be good for our, our public service announcements and any kind of PR that we do or, or press releases. Because the person that does those will have that information too and can always include that. So that's a long, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And thank you for making yourself available. So with that, we will go back just, just a second. Back to our new business and it'll be B, which is conduct a public hearing to receive input regarding unmet transit needs and direct staff to forward all comments to the Humboldt County Association of Governments. And thank you very much for your staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and the member of the public. The item in front of you is our annual public hearing for unmet transit needs. Last year, we had staff from HCOG who came and did a presentation and received feedback and we forwarded that to HCOG. However, this time we don't have any staff from HCOG, so we do not have a presentation. However, our goal is to get the comments today from here and we will forward that to HCOG staff. And they will be working with the Social Service Technical Advisory Council and come up with a recommendation and they'll go to the HCOG Board early next year. So with that, and also we noticed in our staff report, the executive director for HCOG's name is incorrect and the email address is incorrect because we use the old template. So all the dates and timings are correct to provide the feedback. However, just the name is incorrect. The name should be Brendan Byrd, Executive Director for HCOG, and his email address is brendan, his first name, dot byrd@hco.net. Just, this is just a correction. So with that, I will request to make some, get some public comments and then we'll go from there. Thank you. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Do you have any, I just, can I say my, my always unmet transit needs, service to Bayside? Especially if, after looking at those housing maps and everything, right, we might need that. And Sunday.
Thank you. And I, and Netra, please correct me if I'm wrong, but just for the public. Obviously, it's important to hear all of the unmet needs, but I think when, when they get evaluated, they go through a process of what is reasonable to, to meet. So which is a whole metric. So just because we might want, you know, Sunday service or Bayside, which lots of people do, if the metrics don't show that it's reasonable to meet for funding and others, then it doesn't get met, which is why sometimes we hear the same requests year after year. So is that a decent summary?
Yeah, that is a very good summary. I would say to add a service, definitely as a function of funding. Federal funding is tight, funding is always, always tight. Right now, the federal funding is tight. To meet the unmet need, if you want to add an extension to any route, it has to meet at least ten percent of the Fairbox ratio, which means that if you're spending a hundred dollars, you have to bring ten dollars through the ticket service. As long as we, that's one of the criteria. We have to meet that. But that's very hard to meet in our region when we add a extended line. So we have to totally rely on federal funding and other sorts of fundings.
Thank you.
Ask a quick question?
Well, that's what we're here for.
So the green and gold route that was out in Valley West in response to when we had the comfort in students there. My understanding now is not as robust. And I'm just wondering, is that, has that changed? Because?
Currently, we do not operate our transit system, so I'm not aware if they have eliminated that. But to my knowledge, it was still running and I saw some buses running there. And also there's additional service, Cal Poly is running through, I think it's the same green gold which goes to the housing. And they have a lot of students using those routes.
Okay.
So right now from the new dorms, they have, I think it's almost a thousand students a day that ride the bus. They started out with a small bus and then they went to a large bus and they're operating, I think, more than every half hour because of the number of students that are utilizing it in both ways.
You have more information than I do.
Okay, then with that, we'll open public comment. Please come forward. Thank you.
Hello, my name is April Joyce. I'm the administrator at Adult Day Healthcare of Mad River. We are a medically based day program for adults who are dependent on others for some of their care. And we've been serving our community for over forty years. Our staff consists of a multidisciplinary team of nurses, social workers, nurses aides, physical occupational and speech therapists and activity coordinators. And one of the services we provide is transportation to and from our program, to and from our program for our participants who live within our transportation radius. Since we are unable to transport all of our participants each day, we've had a longstanding relationship with Dialer Ride Services and regional center funding transportation to supplement the transportation that we are able to provide, particularly to our participants living in Eureka. The issue I am here to discuss today is the HTA dispatching service for their paratransit riders. This new system was implemented in early two thousand twenty-three. And we've noticed a considerable change in the quality of the service provided and not in a positive way. Prior to this new system being implemented, our participants who were riding on the Dialer Ride vans were typically all transported on one van to and from Eureka, and their time on the bus was fairly consistent. One of our licensing regulations is that our program participants generally should not be on the bus longer than one hour in each direction. While there were a few days where this limit was exceeded, especially for our participants living farthest from our center, most of the rides were well within this parameter. With the introduction of the new dispatching system, everything changed. Participants were now coming and going on three to five buses a day, and the average time on the bus increased significantly for several riders. Based on anecdotal reports from both drivers and our participant passengers, the routes traveled were also less efficient. At times, two passengers living in the same house were transported on two different buses with very different transit times. A bus with available seating drove past the home of a participant awaiting their ride, but they were instead picked up by a different bus twenty minutes later. In two separate instances that I am aware of, passengers were picked up in Eureka and driven to McKinleyville once all the way to the airport before being dropped off in Arcata. It's not uncommon for rides to be dropped either one way or both ways, at times leaving a participant with no way to get into the program or getting picked up considerably later than usual to go home when a bus had to be diverted because there was no scheduled ride home. All of these situations would be stressful for any rider, but when this is happening for people with significant disabilities, it can create a lot of anxiety. But when this is happening for people with significant disabilities, it can create a lot of anxiety. HTA has been aware of these problems for two years now, through complaints from our agency and the drivers impacted by it. But they don't seem to be able to get the software developer to fix the problems.
Well, thank you very much. And I can look into it from HTA's point of view. But thank you. Your next speaker, please.
Yes. Hi, Council. Dan Shaheen from Arcata. Our, Arcata, uh, public transportation is like the missing piece that is absolutely going to be required for sustainable housing. We need not just houses, we need jobs and transportation. And those three form the three legs of that stool that creates truly sustainable housing, right? So the fact that we don't have buses that run on Sunday, we don't have a bus that runs all night. You can't go to the, you can't go to the county fair on a Sunday if you're a family that doesn't have a car. And we're about to build housing in the, in the, in the new district that's going to be a maximum of a quarter of a parking spot per unit. So we're asking ourselves to run into enormous parking problems because you have to have a car if you want to be economically mobile in Humboldt County. There's going to be plenty of work for the people that build those things. But where are the jobs for the people who are going to live in those buildings? How are they going to get to those jobs? If you don't or can't have a car and you expect people not to have a car in Humboldt County, how can you have a job as a construction worker? Where do you keep your tools safely for your car in that district on the street? Do you pay, have to pay a lot more for one of the premium parking spots that's going to be available in the Creamery District? These are huge problems. We need to be thinking about bus stops. Where are the bus stops in the Gateway District Plan? I don't see any. Where's the transit hub that we need if we're truly going to make a sustainable housing center? It's not even thought about. Because most of the plans and the ideas that we're using to implement housing here, just like somebody else said, they're coming from places like San Francisco or even Sacramento, places that have high urban densities. They have centralized public transit. We do not have that here. We cannot build as if we do. It would be a tragic mistake. It'll make the plans for that district really not come to the full fruition that they should. So where do we get the money for transportation? The, the, the thing that was mentioned about having to have 10% of the rides pay for the thing is what has been strangling transportation here. The poor people in the, the Phyllis Rex Townhomes in Samoa have no bus stop in their entire town for the poorest, some of the most needy people in the county. I, I saw a council person needed a ride home from a, a, Kim needed a ride home from a council meeting once because the bus didn't run that late. This is not a situation where we can be building super dense housing like we want to build without really taking care of those things. And the answer to that is buses. It's not a monorail or, it's not hydrogen buses. It's a bunch of buses and bus drivers on the road running frequently. Thanks.
Thank you very much. There's a lot more, well, I may comment. Go ahead.
My name's Joanne McGarry, and I think what we all are not remembering is the Regional Climate Action Plan that's going to be coming into effect. And I've gone to County Board of Suits meetings where they're talking about greenhouse gas emission reduction is going to be necessary at that plan and vehicle miles traveled. We just heard a young man speak about the noise from the freeway. We're talking about unmet transit needs, exactly what Dan Shaheen is saying. Gateway Plan, you know, we didn't even talk about transportation, bus stops, even a transit center there. We don't have a transit center in Arcata anymore. It's a tragedy, in my opinion. That should be like the standard for us to grow from. And we're going to have to, there's going to be a Climate Action Committee formed and vehicle miles traveled is going to be looked at and greenhouse gas emissions. It's, it's all got to be thought of in this very full, whole sense of what we are doing. And I'm a regular bus rider and, you know, Zoran Mamdami is talking about free buses. Maybe we're not quite there yet, but we've got to incentivize people to change their evil ways. I'm sorry, but we, the unmet transit needs have to be, make it sweet and sexy for people to transition to. But we've got to provide it in the first place. So, you know, the apart, the dorms on campus, the off-campus dorms, I've been there seven times now. It's, uh, it's an urban setting with huge parking lots. And we're, yes, we provide shuttle service to them, but it really wasn't well thought out about the future. The future is now, we've got to think about the future, vehicle miles traveled, more public transit, more collective ways to get to places. I say it all the time, but it's going to have to be that way because the Climate Action Plan is going to demand it.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
No, we do not.
I'm surprised we don't have Colin. So one of the things when we're talking about the gateway, which is what the individuals brought up, is that we have no housing there. And so as housing starts to come forward or we start to look at that and we have some proposals, then we can start looking at what the ridership is going to be. And I know there's an interest, Joanne has an interest in having buses run on South G Street. And so it's, you have to have numbers. And to run all night, we're not an urban area like San Francisco, but they don't run on, or they didn't when I lived there. They ran from midnight, 6:00 AM to midnight. And so we're not there yet. You know, our population base is still 134,000 people for the entire county. So it's going to take a while for all of this to come. And it's future planning, and that's what we're doing with the gateway. It's future planning. It's 20-year planning. It may not happen, may never happen, or parts of it may happen. So that's part of the planning process. So what would the council like to do now that we can close the public hearing?
Could I just add a comment also?
Yes, you can.
So to the point of what our speakers was speaking about and to yours, of course, it doesn't all happen overnight and we do what we can. But, you know, if you want to go to, say, the Eureka Flea Market or church, if you live out in Valley West, you can't.
You mean on Sunday?
On Sunday, because there are no churches and it is, you can't get to, you know, Martin Luther King on foot. That's just simply, it's over eight miles round trip. I mean, I guess you could, but if you have children in tow and you want to go to the flea market, it's difficult. If it's raining, it's even more difficult. And then also just to speak to those who live out in that area or any area really, after hours, if you have a job past the bus, then you need to find a job that works with our bus schedule. And if you're differently abled, it's a big challenge to speak with one of the other commenters where I have a good friend who is not able-bodied and another good friend that's legally blind. And both of them have grave difficulties with the bus ridership because it's just simply too far to walk to get to where you're going. There aren't any bus stops in between and it's too difficult if you're blind to navigate that distance. And then also to add, I love the idea of free ridership. We'll get there hopefully sooner than later. We have to prioritize that. And, and more covered bus stops. We live in an area that it rains a lot. And if you are anybody, but I'm thinking of a student who gets wet and then they're soaking wet all day at school. I think of our, our unhoused community that will have the capacity to have a fresh change of clothes at their fingertips. So yeah, more covered bus stops, free buses, something on Sunday and something that goes maybe a little bit longer in the evening for those who have jobs and need to do that. And when my car broke down, you're right, I had to get rides because the council meeting ran beyond our bus schedule. And it was kind of a juggling. It was, yeah.
You could have always asked me, I would have taken you home.
I, I did get rides from everybody up here, but, but not everybody has that luxury. And I just, you know.
I understand that, but we talk about this at HTA and we talk about the ridership and it's coming back slowly but surely since COVID. You know, COVID really affected our ridership and it's a recovery time. Also, HTA is involved in more regional now in order to have North Star, I think that's correct. And they're going to be connecting us down to Ukiah. You can now go down to Ukiah for $2 and come back. But you can't, you know, you can't spend any time there because the bus already turns and comes back. So you'd have to spend the night or something, but that's, that's how it's set up. And the same is coming from Reading. You'll be able to come over from Reading and, and make the connection all the way over here. So it's like this long haul is something they're, they're looking at is trying to make that work. Because Greyhound left us, Amtrak doesn't want to be here anymore. They would like us to take HTA to drop everyone off in Ukiah. Then Amtrak will take you down to the Bay Area. And they are negotiating all the time to make that happen. They're still up here at the moment. So transportation has gotten to be tremendous since the 1970s when we started out with the bus system in Arcata. Before that, you just walked wherever you, or cars and so forth. So we've seen a tremendous amount of activity. And so life will continue, but we'll just have to get older and have it happen gradually. So what would you like us to do now that you've had us all ranting and raving?
I have the comments, so I think, thank you for all the comments. I will compile and send this to HCOG staff. There's again one more opportunity tomorrow at 4:30, HCOG Board Meeting. There will be again a public hearing for the same item. So if people are interested and want to make a voice, please go there, 4:30, Eureka City Hall, HCOG Board Meeting. So, thank you.
I'm just going to mention one other thing. I won't probably bring it up under my comments because I'm going to do it now. But HTA, Humboldt Transit Authority, has been working with DanCo in order to get the Earth Center built in Eureka, which will be the main hub for transportation of all the buses will be at the Earth Center. And they got their funding for that. So we're probably going to see that built out and finished with, probably within a year. So I just wanted to mention that. And then there'll be actually, everyone will be there, not us, but you know, Eureka and all their buses. So thank you.
Okay, I got to do one more. While the buses aren't free, it is an incredible deal. I get to hop a bus to go see family over Thanksgiving for $2 over to Willow Creek. And it'll take me about four hours to get over to Reading. So not any slower than a car, really, maybe 20 minutes difference. And it's, the price is right. And then coming back, it isn't as great. It takes me about eight and a half hours to get back because of all the delays. But I'm just thrilled that I have an opportunity to get over that mountain on a bus and see family over on the other side. So still.
See, we're making progress. Maybe it's not as fast as everyone wants, but we're making progress. So you don't need any action from us. Okay, thank you very much. Then we'll go on to our next item, which is the Public Hearing on Updates to the Master Fee Schedule and Adopt Resolution Number 256-21, a resolution for the City Council of the City of Arcata adopting changes to the city master fee schedule. And thank you very much.
Good evening.
Staff report.
Mayor, City Council, members of the public. So this is relatively a minor issue, but what we are doing tonight is that every, every spring, typically on the second meeting in April, we have you go through and update the city's master fee schedule. And we, we look at all of the fees in anticipation of the new budget year. We update things for the CPI inflation factor and any other revisions that happen. It is always almost notorious that the minute that we pass that, we find small mistakes that have been made or we find new services or new fees that we'd like to add. So we have typically done a very small update mid-year, and this is what we are bringing to you today. So we have, I think there's about nine or 10 fees that we are either adding and/or correcting on the fee schedule. It has a very, very minor impact to our revenues because they're small dollar items. And until, on, on a few of those, they're actually new items that we may or may not even see people use right away. But that is what we're doing tonight. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And then, of course, we'll have a public hearing that we can provide input on these minor changes to the fee schedule. They will be effective as of January 1st. There's a waiting period. This does go through a formal public hearing that's been noticed and the whole process. But like I said, these just allow us to keep that fee schedule current and correct.
Thank you. Did the council have questions on the fee schedule? Are they unhappy with any of the fees on the fee schedule? Okay, well, let's have a public hearing. Let's open the public hearing on the fee schedule. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Do we have anyone on Zoom that would like to speak on this item?
No, we do not.
Okay, so with that, we have to make, we have to, we have the Resolution 256-21, which we need to adopt. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 256-21, adopting changes to the city's master fee schedule.
I will second.
And there's a second. Okay, since we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll go on to our Item D, which is Find Ordinance Number 1583 to Exempt From the California Environmental Quality Act, Introduce Ordinance Number 1853, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Arcata, amending Title Number 5678 of the Arcata Municipal Code and adopting by reference the 2025 California Building Standard Code and the Uniform Housing Code and the Uniform Code for Abatement of Dangerous Buildings and Property Maintenance Code. And thank you for your staff report and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you, public. Like you said, we have a rather formality type of ordinance that we do every three years to formally adopt the state standard, Building Standards Code. It's a required code regardless of whether we adopt it or not. So it just helps us to be in line with state law requirements. It is also our opportunity to make any amendments or modifications. So there are a few minor modification amendments in here that I'm happy to answer any questions on. And unfortunately, we were not able to have those amendments and modifications across the board due to Assembly Bill 130, which limited any modifications to residential building codes. So it is somewhat limited, but we'll get them in six years. Any questions?
Well, so CEQA, as far as the state government is concerned, they have sort of put it on hold. So what, so this is not, what is this exactly then?
Basically, my understanding is it's just a formality to say that, that it's exempt from CEQA for the reasons stated. I basically copy pasted this from the one that was three years ago and the one that was three years before that. Rhea, do you, do I need to do anything more than just say that or we're good on that, I think?
Well, I just, it says in here, finding necessity for stricter standards.
I got you.
And, and you can see under the Environmental Review Section, Mayor Stillman, you know, it, it gives the reasons why that the finding for it being exempt can be there, which is it implements state mandated legislation aimed at reducing the reliance on fossil fuels, reduces greenhouse gas emissions and encouraging the use of fuel-efficient electric vehicles by requiring ministerial issuance of building permits for installation of electric vehicles. This is.
And bad buildings.
Yeah. So yes, if there are any questions about any of the specific amendments, modifications, I'm happy to answer those.
I don't have a question. I was just going to make the motion.
Okay.
So I will.
Really quick question.
Sure.
Page 1 of 13, 2.5, where it talks about the hemp line hempcrete construction.
Yes.
I probably, if I would have done a little more homework, I would know the answer, but is that newer?
So the different appendices that are listed there, they're in the code, but they're not specifically included in the code unless we adopt them. So it's a set of standards, it's two pages. So if somebody were to present a hempcrete housing design, it would give me a little bit of guidance on how to review that.
And you're hoping that someone will?
Absolutely.
You can't wait, actually. So let's go ahead and have a doc, the motion.
A public, any public comment on this?
Public comment.
Hi, my name is Joanne McGarry. And in all honesty, I haven't been able to look at what some of these changes are that you're talking about. And I was, I live, I'm a tenant in a 24-unit complex. And I got the landlord to agree to get rid of the dumpster, which was causing some problems. And they provided instead 60-gallon cans for trash per four units. So we have three in the 12 units. So we have three in the twelve units in my particular area of the complex. And then I went today to ask at recology if we could upgrade, upsize them and get them locked. And the only locked ones that they provide are ninety gallons, and it's forbidden in the city of Arcata for us to have ninety gallon trash cans. We have ninety gallon recycle cans. But I, I know this, I don't know if this is an ordinance or some recology rule or anything like that, but I just wanted to say this out loud because if there's a good reason we can't have bigger ones, it's problematic that we only have smaller ones. And I don't want to go back to the dumpster. So I just wanted to say that.
Well, I just want to add one thing for you, that you can actually put your own locks on those, and then you unlock them when the garbage just picks me up. Yes, you can. I've done that for my tenants. But you have to unlock them yourself. Yes, they will. Yes, you do. You can make it work. Okay, with that. Can we have an, can we introduce ordinance number fifteen?
I would love to make a motion to find that the adoption of ordinance number fifteen eighty-three is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and pursuant to section fifteen oh six one B three of the CEQA guidelines for the reasons stated in ordinance number fifteen eighty-three. And I would also like to introduce ordinance number fifteen eighty-three, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Arcata, amending title eight of the Arcata Municipal Code and adopting by reference the twenty twenty-five California Building Standards Code, the Uniform Housing Code, the Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings, and the Property Maintenance Code, and waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only.
I'll second that.
Thank you for reading all of that, and thank you for your second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And let me know if you ever have any questions on building codes, I'll go for it.
Thank you very much for this evening coming. So our next item on the agenda is oral and written communications. It's continued. The council will value your comments. The public comment period allows people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss, take action on items not listed on the agenda. The council may respond to statements. Please come forward and speak. Thank you.
Hi, council. This is a weird one. So we have a strange, pernicious, dangerous, alien presence in Arcata. It's the data center on Eleventh Street, okay? Last time somebody came up here and said they were really worried because we were getting a cell phone tower, and they said, we're getting a data center in Arcata. They thought that was a data center. We got a real one, an Edge Connects data center. The smallest data center Edge Connects makes is a one megawatt per hour data center, which is most likely what this is. However, they will not tell you because that's viewed as a trade secret. The other thing that's viewed as a trade secret is how much water one of these data centers uses. A one megawatt data center like this probably is, is estimated to use about eight million gallons of water a year. Okay? And what's it using that water for? Well, if you build a data center in twenty twenty-five, you're not building it without packing it full of something called GPUs. You guys know what GPUs are? That's the hardware that powers artificial intelligence. You know, the thing that's about to upend our society, the thing that is changing the way everyone works every day. I'm an engineer. I work with engineer with AI every single day. And if you're a freshman at Cal Poly Humboldt right now studying computer science, by the time you graduate, you might as well have been studying buggy whip manufacturing because those jobs might be gone. In all likelihood, we're talking within such a short time period, much smaller than the industrial revolution, because it's turbo powered by these things and powered by investment capital, meaning far more money and power is expended in the generation of the generative AI crapola that we see every day. So much energy is expended in, into that, that it's, it's, they're selling it for less than it costs. Why? Because of investment money. Nvidia just announced their earnings today. The company known as Nvidia that makes GPUs is worth two and a half times Canada. Nvidia is on paper worth more than every pizza ever made in history. Okay? These numbers are ridiculous. They're not realistic. They're based on projections of income that are probably very unrealistic. We're headed for economic crash, societal crash, and not to mention the tremendous amounts of power and water this is draining. Now, I wa, I don't think we voted on this. I don't think the council voted on this. I, and I know that we probably don't even have a good idea of how much water and power is being used by this ugly monster. They took a hardware store that employed twenty, thirty people, and it's a robotic data center that employs almost no one and is sucking the lifeblood out of the artists of this world. We have the highest concentration of artists of almost anywhere here.
Thank you very much for your comments.
I just want to say that my son is a freshman at Cal Poly, man, during in computer science, and I'm making him change his major next semester.
Next speaker, please. Go ahead, sir.
In the Lost Coast Outpost event calendar, Rebound slash NorCal Collectors Expo, December seventh, twenty twenty-four event, use the city of Arcata Parks and Recreation Department's official phone number and email as their point of contact. In the same publication, Rebound slash NorCal Collectors Expo, April fifth, twenty twenty-five event, use the Parks and Recreation's official phone number as their point of contact. To the district attorney's office, taxpayers of Arcata, please listen closely. Article sixteen, section six, California Gift of Public Funds doctrine outlined in the state's constitution. The legally used public resources, a formal and transparent agreement must be clearly in place that clearly defines the public purpose being served. Without this, the city would face legal risks by allowing this because the arrangement is essentially providing free administrative and operational support to a private organization. Without a clear public purpose and a formal agreement, it fails to meet the legal standards of the Gift of Public Funds doctrine in California. Request for public records. I ask for a minimum of agreement of understanding or a formal agreement, as well as the direct and substantial public purpose being served by allowing Rebound slash NorCal Collectors Expo to use the Parks and Recreation's official phone number and email. The city's response? City does not have any records responsive to your request. Brown Act. Any decision to allow a nonprofit to use city contact information has, should, contact information should have been approved in a public meeting. Conducting such a decision in private would be a violation of the act. Request for public records. I ask for a document that shows the publicly approved by the city council in a public meeting for Rebound slash NorCal Collectors Expo to use the Parks and Recreation's phone number and email. The city's response? The city does not have any records responsive to this request. California Government Code, section eighty-three fourteen, makes it unlawful for any elected state or local officer, appointee, or employee, or consulate to use or permit others to use public resources, including equipment, phones, computers, and compensated time for personal or campaign activities, or for any purpose not authorized by law. California Penal Code, four twenty-four, misappropriation of public funds. If an employee in charge of public funds knowingly misuses them for an unauthorized purpose, it is a felony offense. While this is typically associated with money, the use of city resources like a phone line and email could be viewed as a financial benefit to a nonprofit at taxpayer's expense. If the city says they didn't approve anyone to use city contact information, then the city is alleging that Benjamin, Tom Trepica, and possibly the ink people who wrote the deposit check of allegedly fraudently using public resources. This allegedly could be misappropriation of funds or embezzlement of public property, which states using, I repeat, using, or taking public property, which can be, which, which can include resources beyond just money for personal gain is considered embezzlement. Both are serious felonies. Go to access Humboldt YouTube to see my video, Does Arcata Really Believe in Diversity in the Law? This will be the last time I'm going to be speaking about this. But if you don't think, this is, if you think this is no big deal, put yourself in the shoes of the person who's going to speak next. And I'm willing to talk to anybody. Ray Barley has my phone number. You guys are willing to call me anytime, and I'll tell you all about it.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
My name is Dwayne. I'm a local Native American and gay man. I was once on the, a board member with the Humboldt Flea Market when it first opened in Arcata. Then I started and owned the Redwood Acres Flea Market in Eureka. Last year, I met with the park and rec supervisor, Colin Groom, with a new event idea. After Arcata learned who my vendors were, two other men came up with an almost identical event as mine. They didn't rent from Eureka, Fortuna, McKinleville, just Arcata. I never received any communication from Colin after our one meeting, even the, even though a local Lost Coast Outpost reporter quoted Colin saying he tried to reach out to me to fill out the paperwork, yet I, I emailed him twice, and after meeting with him, no If you watch Bryce's video, you'll see almost every single person is white and presumably straight. Since this has happened to me, my friends have noticed a physical, visible change in my personality. Unbelievably poor to bad luck has also followed me, losing my job, my car, and my dog. I'm asking one question with David Josiah Lawson in mind. Do innocent, straight, white people in positions of power make false statements to multiple media outlets and not follow multiple laws if they did nothing wrong when dealing with a gay Native American or people of color? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary. I wait till the end so I get three minutes to hopefully talk about three things. First thing is, I sent a letter right after the last meeting to share a few house maintenance items, including the sound system in this room and the one hearing device you have that, again, tonight was non-functioning. My hearing aids do not work in this room. I've tried them. There's really a significant issue with the sound in this room and people not being heard, depending on where you're sitting and, and all those kinds of things. So we really need to look into this because it is an ADA accessibility issue. And so I really hope that you will take it seriously because I watch these meetings at the end on video, and you can hear it quite fine on YouTube, but whatever's happening in this room, and people will attest to that, they're just not saying it out loud like I am, is, there's an issue. So the second thing I want to talk about is climate change and Michael Furnas, I spoke with him after he left, speaking about the Forest Management Committee. And I've been watching COP thirty, the climate summit in Belém, Brazil, which is at, on the Amazon River, at the Amazon Rainforest. And a lot of talk has been about the importance of, and the symbolism of that meeting being there, and the importance of the Amazon Basin to our livelihood. And so I would like to suggest, because I think it really would be not just symbolic, but significant, that we consider some of those carbon offsets that we give to our forest and make the donation to the Amazon Preservation Forest as a symbol of our commitment to the global need for preserving the Amazon. So I just wanted to put that out there as a suggestion, to use some of that offset money. And the final time here, again, I want to talk about the need for us to understand the saga of our city as we try to grapple with the reality of the horror of what our tax dollars have helped aid and abet in Gaza and Palestine. And I am not a part of the sister city movement. I want to make that clear. I was actually not invited to be a part of it deliberately. So I am not against any association with people who want to associate with Arcata in other parts of the world. And I think we really need to look at what I have suggested often is joining hands with cities that are international cities of peace, the Nonviolent City Project, and the Charter for Compassion. Let Arcata be a peaceful, nonviolent, compassionate place, and we can join in and be that.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak? We will go to Zoom, please. How many people do we have on Zoom?
There are currently three hands raised.
Two hands, did you say?
Three.
Three, okay, thank you. We'll start with our first speaker.
Abraham, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Eighty million gallons of water. Man, it's too bad we don't live next to the ocean. But sister cities are not for humanitarian aid or for promoting an anti-government agenda either. They're for cultural exchange. RPJC, Humboldt for Palestine, they don't care about children in Gaza. If, if they did, they would support Israel. They would support the peace plan. For them, this is about showing solidarity with anyone who wants to use violence to destroy free markets and democratically elected governments, especially Jewish ones. That's something they have in common with Tucker Carlson and Nick Fuentes, by the way. Since the municipality of Gaza City was mentioned, that's the governing body in Gaza City. And we know this, there's only one governing body in Gaza, Hamas. So you are being asked to break the law by forming an official financial partnership with Hamas. Please don't do that. I want to talk more about the rising threat to our democracy, and I mentioned it in passing, but what I really came here to say tonight is that this is your house. You have anti-government radicals coming into your house to tear down our democratic institutions. I'm a parent. You know what I don't have in my house? People don't throw temper tantrums in my house. People aren't physically violent or verbally abusive. And I don't allow Jew haters in my house. I don't negotiate, I don't threaten, and I don't have to use force. I just don't allow it. This is your house. You're responsible for what goes on here, especially during this time, and you have to act as a bulwark against the fact, the forces that are trying to undermine our democracy. So you don't have to allow any of that stuff to happen here in your house either. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Our second speaker, please.
Ella, please go ahead. Ella, please go ahead. Ella, looks like you're unmuted. Can you please try talking?
Do you want to go to our third speaker and see if the second one can come figure out how to come back online?
Okay. Jody, please go ahead. Jody, please go ahead.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, and I, and Ella, she'll have to come back. She's trying to figure it out, okay? My name is Jody, and I live in Arcata. Turn that down. I'm here tonight, once again, to raise my objection to Gaza Sister City Project. Gaza is still controlled by Hamas, an internationally designated terrorist organization that rejoices in killing. They are a death cult that promises death to America and all Jews. Since the ceasefire started, Hamas has brutally and publicly tortured and executed hundreds of Gazan civilians who spoke up about wanting freedom from Hamas. That alone should be enough to disqualify Gaza City as a candidate for a sister city with Arcata. Is this the culture we want to bring here? It's also illegal in the United States to aid and abet or give comfort to a designated terrorist organization. At the last meeting here, a speaker claiming to be a Palestinian called all of the people who come to speak out against sister city, white supremacists, because we strongly object to a Gaza sister city. What a racist thing to say. What does the color of my skin have to do with whether Gaza qualifies to be a sister city? Would he still say that about me if I were a black or brown person? He doesn't even know me. This man knows nothing about me or about my years of activism for peace and civil rights starting in the early nineteen seventies until now. So don't come to these meetings and try to tell me who and what I am. There should be no place for hatred in Arcata's culture. Projects that are viciously demanded by loud racist Jew haters should not qualify for consideration, especially in an ongoing war zone where two hostages are still being held. Thousands of trucks of aid are going to Gaza every day. There is no famine there, and there is no genocide there. It has been disproven. The Board of Peace will start, and a coalition of countries will take over the needs of Gaza very shortly. Palestinians will have to accept that Israel's not going anywhere and learn how to live in peace with their neighbors. Instead of a Gaza sister city, why not adopt Arcata as our sister city and do something for the houseless people here that need help now? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you think your other speaker number, we had, we, can she get on?
Yeah, Ella raised her hand. And since this process, since the process of raising hands at the beginning of the public comment period is new, I just wanted to mention that an additional hand is raised beyond Ella as well.
Originally, we had, I asked how many people we had on public comment. I think you said we had three.
Yes, we had three.
So I think that's what we have is three.
Okay. Okay. Ella, please go ahead. Ella, you are unmuted. Please go ahead. Sorry, Ella, we cannot hear you. Mayor Stillman, I I think that there's.
I think we'll have to progo it because she's having difficulty. There's nothing we can do on our end. So that concludes our oral and written communications for this evening and we'll go on to the city manager's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Stillman. I just have a few things that that I wanted to report. One of those, there was a lot of interest from speakers at our last meeting on the city assessing what the situation up is. The situation at Highland was where there was a popular walking trail that had been blocked off by property owners. I did meet with, um, I did talk with one of the property owners by phone and reached out to the other property owner and really what I found is that they're not interested in discussing an easement with the city at this time. So that doesn't leave us a lot of options for pursuing the acquisition of an easement. I left the door open and let them know I would be interested in talking to them if they change their mind. But at this point, I don't see an item that we can agendize for a future council meeting for property acquisition or negotiation. So I just wanted to make that clear that I looked into that.
So so the fence that they put up is on their property.
It's on private property, correct.
And so, okay, the people were on private property when they were walking through in the past.
And that that doesn't mean there are even civil civil remedies that neighbors can take if they feel like they have the right to be there. So but right now I don't see action that the city can take moving forward. But people can contact me if they have ideas or other information that we may be missing. I also.
Thank you.
Okay, I also wanted to give an update. We had a lot of people really interested in the proposed cell cell tower off Shirley. I I don't have anything to report on that right now. Other than we, we are going to be meeting with some concerned property owners on Friday, so I may have something to bring back. But the city has provided comments to the county requesting that the county recognize the standards for cell towers that are included in the city zoning ordinance and indicated that any encroachments onto the city right away would have to comply with city standards. Additionally, we didn't want to bring an item or a hearing to this city council because we didn't want, we want the public to recognize that the city is not the agency with permitting authority, but it's a county. And so I think it's it's important that those comments are directed to the city. And although we'll be listening and thinking about ideas and there are some out there that we intend to talk to nearby property owners about, you know, we're an open door. We'll keep the communication going at a staff level. But I don't see anything else that we can agendize at this time. And it's my understanding from talking to the county permitting, to the county planners that that application is currently on suspension for more information. So.
I I think you said should be directed to the city.
To the county. Any comment should, oh, I'm sorry. Any comment should be directed to the county. The county has regulatory authority over that project. Thank you for the correction, Councilmember White. So again, we're we're monitoring that. We're we're open to talking nearby property owners, but right now there's there's not really anything that we can agendize or bring back to the council at this time. And then I I will just say a couple of other smaller items that that actually a couple of them were mentioned. I was pleased that the opening of the Redwood Park Bathroom and was was picked up by the local media and so people have more awareness there. And then additionally, I think Councilmember White mentioned seeing the ambassadors. Our ambassadors are rotating out into the Valley West area currently. And they're they're going out there one to two days a week. We have two new ambassadors that are being on boarded and so they'll start making more rounds. Once those new ambassadors come on, it'll probably be after the holiday season and the, um, they've been brought up to speed on on staff. And then one other exciting thing that we're that I'm working on is, um, meeting with fire working groups who representatives from Cal Poly Humboldt, the Arcata Fire District and the city are meeting really to follow up on the recommendations of the standards of coverage. And so we have a really collaborative approach we're taking right now with the fire district to try to see what ways we can work together to move the fire district forward and make sure that they have what they need in order to provide good fire protection for the district and the city of Arcata.
Would you also like to mention the homeless services meeting today?
We did have a homeless services meeting today. There is a lot of items discussed. You know, one of them, there was some positive news on funding, um, and I believe it was primitive, uh, permanent supportive housing from Arcata House mentioned that they were able to hang on to some of their funding that they thought they were going to lose. So there has been some positive, um, news there, but then, uh, the, you know, there's still a lot of the, um, funding and some of the new requirements that they're quite concerned about in the homeless service provider community. So I don't have any more detail on that at this time.
The only other thing is that the Arcata House talked about how they were going to handle, uh, extreme weather shelter. And they were going to be looking at how how to do that, good weather, bad weather. And the other thing, um, one of the members said that we're supposed to have some kind of really arctic kind of conditions this winter. Where we'll have really cold and we'll have rain. And so I guess that will give us a lot of ice.
Yeah, and and just for the clarification and inclement weather, are, um, Arcata, the the annex, um, near the former transit station is the place where people should go when they're looking for services there and ask and talk to Arcata House.
They find housing. Yes, it is.
And then lastly, there was an interesting article in Cal Matters. We had a while ago, we had a joint study session with the Planning Commission and the City Council where they were looking at the single staircases and there was an example of Culver City who managed to pass one before the moratorium on building permits. And so that was a great article on November eighteenth. If you want to look at the Cal Matters article about single staircases and some of the the advantages and disadvantages of of that. And as a change to building code.
Be able to do that. The city of Arcata wanted to hold off.
And that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you. So let's start with Sarah on council reports, please.
Um, I don't really have a lot to report because all of my meetings will either be canceled because of the holiday or happen early next week. I will have a rescheduled RCEA meeting, some more to come at the next meeting. The only thing I've really been doing besides working, uh, I do want to plug a local event tomorrow. It is Taste of the Holidays that, um, the local Arcata Rotary Club has put on and it supports the Backpacks for Kids program. Which if you are concerned about, uh, children in our community being hungry, that is a great program to support, um, because they provide food bags over the weekend for students on free and reduced lunch. So, um, go out, support it. It's at the community center. It's a staple of the Arcata holiday season, in my opinion, and I've volunteered and attended the event probably like for the last 10 years. So it's great. You should go. And that's all I got.
I went to the Cal Poly Humboldt Politics Club mixer, which was great to, um, meet students from the politics club as well as other disciplines. And actually, one of the students was here, one one that I visited with was here tonight participating. So that was pretty fun. I filled in for Mayor Stillman, um, in the advisory committee for Cal Poly Humboldt's interim president, um, which I think that was his, uh, that would be the last advisory meeting for him as the new one comes in. I participated in a small Cal Cities meeting in my capacity as, uh, one of the leaders of this region. They're actually having a big in-person conference to set advocacy policies, um, but it's it's down in Southern California and it's hard for us to go to all of those, so I won't be at that one. But some of the things that they're talking about working on are protecting local revenues and expanding economic development, strengthening climate change resiliency and disaster preparedness, strengthening and modernizing critical infrastructure and securing investments to prevent and reduce homelessness and increase, um, uh, the supply of affordable housing. And I do have my HCOG meeting tomorrow. And if you've driven on the one oh one recently, you might have found yourself going over the bridge and the the underpass portion won't be available for a while, but we can get used to the diversion in the road for now. Very exciting.
It was really exciting because you you went over it and you didn't feel as though you were on a bridge or anything. It was so smooth and so easy. It was, I'd read that that was happening. It was nice. Okay, we'll go on to you, Kimberly.
Sorry, I was thinking we were going to jump over and do me last, so I wasn't ready. So since city council is not going to be meeting for our regular meeting on December third, I, um, just wanted to, uh, let folks know that we're doing a retirement thing for our, uh, chief Bart Silvers. And then we will be also bringing in our incoming. I did attend a Redwood Region Economic Development Loan Committee meeting, had the honor to approve another local business loan. Tuesday, November twenty-fifth, I will be attending an Equity Arcata Advisory Group. And again, since our city council will not be meeting at our regular meeting for December third, I will report out that I will be attending another Arca, Equity Arcata Event Professional Development Committee meeting. On Monday, November tenth, I attended a co-ed, community organizations active in disaster. They do it quarterly. On Wednesday, the twelfth, I attended Cal Poly Humboldt Redwood Coast Tsunami Working Group Monthly Meeting. And on Thursday, the thirteenth, I also attended a Humcart Humboldt Community Animal Response Team for Disaster Preparedness Monthly Meeting. And I will be attending a Arcata Community Emergency Response Team Monthly Meeting tomorrow. That is a lot of disaster preparedness. And then finally Kuna held their third annual disaster preparedness block party and our one-year resilience hub anniversary. We had over two hundred attendees. We gave out thousands of dollars of disaster preparedness supplies. Go bags were given away. We had ten organizations involved in disaster preparedness tabling and of course, our resident earthquake and tsunami expert Lori Dangler was our guest speaker. We had wonderful food. That was catered by Los Gilas at Taquisa, which is a taco bar, and we had live music by Safety Corridor. We received enormous feedback from folks that attended that they definitely feel more prepared. So if you want to know more about disaster preparedness, get ahold of Kuna. And also finally, we will be holding a pantry produce day again this Saturday, three to six. We are doubling down because we know there's a lot of need out there. And also we have bought a bunch of rain ponchos and we also have some socks donated by Hatcher. So if there are folks out in the community and you're out and about and you want to give those items out to our unhoused community, it's wet, it's cold, come on by and we will get you supplied. That's all I have.
All right, I know everybody's been waiting for it, but in January at my HWMA meeting, we'll finally have, um, an update on SB thirteen eighty-three, which is organics processing. I know it's taken us a really long time. Um, so hopefully we'll have some movement on that. Um, I've had a couple of emails asking about, um, where that has been. Let's see, I can't read my handwriting. Um, Giving Tuesday will be, um, it's the Tuesday after Thanksgiving and Access Humboldt really could use some support. They're losing, um, the building that they were in at Cal Poly, uh, at, uh, College of the Redwoods. They provide such an important, um, service, um, and they could use, um, some help. Um, the Choose Humboldt app is live. I don't know if anybody's downloaded it, but it's really cool and you can check into places and like make comments. It's it's pretty awesome. It is transgender awareness week and tomorrow night is transgender day of remembrance. So I just, um, wanted to bring that up. Also, I was again, I was appointed for the third year now to the Cal Cities, um, Housing Economic and Community Development Committee, which does do advocacy and legislation advocacy for, um, housing, community development. So, um, we are really represented, um, Leslie Castellanos on that as well. And I know that the two of us, um, definitely, um, speak about Humboldt County and our housing challenges. And, um, whoever is getting the last piece of the fence, um, put up on Alliance, you're making my dreams come true. And, um, so thank you for that and happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you. So, um, there's there's a section of the trail that's been paved from Cal Poly to Humboldt, which is very exciting. And there's some upgrades that need to happen on that, but it's coming along. And you just mentioned Choose Humboldt, um, the app and I do, I downloaded it. Now I'm glad it's active. And also I tended, um, it's it's the, um, it was the state of the nonprofit sector. And that was, um, when you went to the university, which I couldn't do both. And so I I attended that where Arcata House, um, United Indian Health Services, Centro Del Pueblo, Playhouse, Key TV, Mid Klamath and the Changing Tides all spoke about what they do. But one of the best things out of it is they all collaborate in order to try to put, use their dollars and to make things work the best possible. So it was a, uh, it was a good meeting and there was a lot of information that was available. So, oh, I put everything on my phone and I took a lot off because we already talked about it. So, um, no, I think that's that's about it. And don't forget tomorrow night. I'm assuming you'll be there. At the Taste of the Holidays, which is a long-term event we've had for a very, very long time. In fact, I might even have an extra ticket to that. So, um, with that, we have, uh, no, we are, our next meeting will be canceled, the regular meeting of December third at six o'clock because we have a really, really light, um, agenda. And so we decided to cancel it. We've canceled it in the past, so that will not be happening. And number B is scheduled for a special meeting to elect a mayor and vice mayor at five thirty on Thursday, December eleventh, twenty twenty-five, and the council chamber is here. And Kimberly already mentioned about the chiefs. And so there are no closed sessions, no closed session reports, and now we're adjourned.
Oh, real quick, um, Sisters of Perpetual Indulgence is on the plaza at five thirty tomorrow.
Okay.
Congratulations on your last full meeting, Alex. Thank you so much.